It's six o'clock, we are going to get started, so I'm gonna call the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to order. And we are all in person, so we don't need to roll call. Um, okay, so we are going, and just for the minutes, Carrie Rankin is not gonna be with us tonight. And we will start with our recognitions, and tonight we have joining us the Jewish Student Union. And I'll let Dr. Hunter kind of talk a little bit about who's coming while they're coming up to the table with us.
So, we're excited to have um the advisor to the Jewish Student Union from the high school. And a member or two, I'm not sure how many actually would make it. Um, we thought it would be a good opportunity for you to hear some of what's happened since the group launched as the school year started. So, we welcome Kelly Christie, and we'll let you introduce who's with you, and we're really thrilled you were able to be here.
Okay, um, so I'm thrilled to be here, um, the Jewish Student Union, um, I'd say we have, what do you think Addie, about twenty, twenty-five members? Yeah, they don't, and not everybody comes every week, but we've been meeting every Tuesday morning at seven twenty, so people are very motivated. Um, and the kids are full of energy, very excited, um, and Addie, what would you say has been like the most positive thing about the group? Like, you've been at every meeting, you've been like right out there.
Definitely just having a community with other Jewish students.
Yeah, exactly, and um, do people say anything more about what the community means to them? Or do you have thoughts yourself on that? Do you wanna say, read it in your own, okay?
Okay, good evening, everyone, thank you to the school committee for giving JSU representatives a chance to talk here tonight. I'm Adeline Wansock, a junior at Concord Carlisle High School and a member of the Jewish Student Union. Even in the early stages of the JSU, the group has proven to be a place where we have been able to connect, to explore both Jewish religion and culture. We have found it impactful and necessary to meet other Jewish students and faculty, as most of us didn't realize the company we had. Being a member of the GSU has also allowed us to take an active role in the community, as it has given me the opportunity to take a leadership role and speak about my background, such as a state panel hosted at Krem Shalom. We hope to meet with school administrators, administrators to discuss our ideas to address antisemitism within our school. In the club, we have been able to connect over shared experiences unique to Jewish culture. Before we felt isolated, as it was frustrating to not meet others who could understand what it meant to be a minority within the community or to share connections to Israel. Tuesday mornings allow us to act as a time for us to bond over shared experiences and allow me to feel connected, not only within my school, but also within my religion. Beyond the club meetings, we have shared Jewish culture with our classmates and allies, holding a bake sale for Rosh Hashanah. Most recently, we have been planning a host Shabbat dinner soon, and we look forward to the future of JSU, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I don't know what else there is to say, I think Addie really said it all, um, we, um, we also are planning some meetings at later dates so that more kids can come, and I've been, it's been wonderful to also see that we do have allies. Like, we have kids that are not Jewish that come to support us, um, we have kids of all religions, backgrounds, um, we're a very welcoming space. And it's been incredibly positive. And, um, although I, you know, as a Jew, it's very disheartening for me to see the level of antisemitism and anti-Israel sentiment in the world. When I walked through Concord Carlisle High School and like, I mean, I, I would say Addie's been behind a lot of things at JSU. She helped me put up the posters, they're all over the school. No one's taken down any JSU posters, nobody's written anything bad on them, everybody's just, that's cool. Um, sometimes I bring my leftover Shabbat challah to the meeting, and I have leftovers, and I bring them to my room in three twenty-three. And the kids of, you know, Muslim kids, Christian kids, kids of Israel religion, my Hindu kid, they're all like, what's that, Ms. K? And, you know, we're just coming, so, um, it's super, super positive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question before you go? Do you have freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, so you, do you feel like your group is fairly representative of all grades at the high school?
Yeah, definitely, we've had a lot near freshmen, definitely the seniors, the juniors, the sophomores.
We're also developing kind of a distributed leadership model where we're, like, we have many opportunities for leadership and like making sure that seniors have some leadership, but also underclassmen have leadership opportunities and are helping each other.
Yeah, so really everyone has a role.
Exactly.
Perhaps, uh, three points, uh, one, you had mentioned, Addie, that, uh, the experience, well, we'll filter respond, the experience you had speaking before the MSCCA, uh, at Krem Shalom perhaps about a month ago, could you expand on that, what it meant for you, what it meant for the JSU?
I think it meant really like a space for Jewish students to talk and share their experiences, and it was helpful to hear from my classmates. Cause before the JSU, I felt really isolated in that I didn't know if other people agreed with me, or even if there were other Jewish students.
I just need other point, uh, collaboration with other JSUs in the region, or other collaboration across other school groups, like student union. Felt back to when, when I was younger, certainly not in, in my elementary or middle school or high school years. The Black and Jewish community shared a lot of things, that seems to have changed over time sadly, but certainly working with the BSU here in school or in our surrounding communities, is that something that's been thought of?
We, we have talked about that, and I actually had a conversation with Jason Wise, who teaches the Black History class, about making sure that we are teaching the connection between the Black community and the Jewish community. Jewish leaders during the Civil Rights Movement were incredibly seminal in standing up as allies. And I don't think a lot of kids really know that, and I, that would to me be really important to make sure that we are really putting into the community. And, and looking at other groups, um, you know, sometimes Jews feel like we stand up for other groups, but other groups don't stand up for us. And so, we would really like to see, um, opportunities for us to kind of work together with other groups and see that mutuality really evolving. Um, but I have like, I have students that are in the South Asian, the South Asian group, they're putting on the Dwali ceremony, and I'm, I'm really, I'm planning to go to that. And I'm hoping that they're gonna come to some of our stuff, like, we've invited, um-
We will invite the Christian students.
Exactly, exactly, and, and Addie's been involved with, um, other groups in the school where there's been some cross-fertilization of ideas. If you wanna mention that.
Yeah.
It's not easy to get anything started, so thank you for being brave and getting this, getting this started. Just one question, what's your Instagram handle?
We have one, one doesn't.
Do you know what it is?
Uh, no, I don't.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
You can probably just send it to me.
I have it, I will send it to-
For like JSU, CCHS, and you'll find it.
Yeah, I, I have to work on my Instagram.
I'm a follower, so I'll pass it along.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want the community to know.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your leadership.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kel. All right, and next up, we have our student reps, I see Mark's with us, are you the only one with us today?
I am the only one today.
Yes, because there's a field hockey game, right, this playoff game, right?
Addie's gone.
I will be, she'll be on Zoom.
Is she on Zoom, okay, let's look, see. Does Maddie play field hockey?
She does.
She does, so there's a playoff game at the high school.
The end is at six, so right before.
It's at six, okay.
Not sure she can make it.
I don't see her.
Her coach likes to talk to the back to the games, always, forty minutes.
All right, Mark, I think it's just you.
Yeah, he wants to come.
Thank you.
See ya.
Well, thanks for following us all around to these venues and coming in person, it's awesome.
I know, it is great. I had no idea until like five minutes ago, I was like, Mom, I have to come back, so. It's like I'm already in bed, but, okay.
Well, I was glad I got to meet your mom last week too, so it's great.
Um, so I'm gonna start off with quarter one to finish last Friday, I know they're still putting in grades and we're doing some last minute things. I had my AP, um, Chimaic stats test last, after school today, cause it was one twenty and I was able to do it, it took me like an hour, but got it done. And then I had my math test after, so quarter one, we're finishing up and it's looking pretty good, I think. They're letting us do, I feel like, a lot more, um, extra credit things or just going over older things that we might have not understood, we understand now. So just to get our grades up and, you know, um, oh, the hilarious costumes that the CCHS faculty did. Um, I know the math department did one that was like six-seven, which everyone knows is really funny.
Oh, yes, they did six-seven, I was six-seven.
Um, and then the, the other ones, um, I don't know, Evelyn might know.
English, English part, is she on?
Evelyn's on, I just, we just spotted her, yep.
Evelyn might be able to say, um, which the other ones are, I know math department was six-seven, cause we all, so the thing is, like, we don't know the theme.
Yeah.
And then we have to like guess, so, we, the six-seven one was pretty obvious, cause like my, Ms. Doosell, my math teacher, had like six-seven earrings, I nourished on them.
Guess what they are.
And then Mr. Franz, my, he sat such, he had like, it was like the point on the graph was like six-seven.
Yeah.
So it's pretty funny, do you know what the other ones were, the other departments?
I did follow the Instagram, English was banned books, I love the thing, it was banned books, so they had like police tape on and all the books that have been banned in other districts.
Was it? Can Maddie hear us?
Uh, Evelyn, Evelyn, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm good, sorry, I was, I know there was some technical difficulties there, but I'm good. All right, um, hold on, let me pull this up, I, is the screen, should I share my screen, or is this?
You can. You can, yeah, we could see your slides then if you did that.
Yeah, why don't I do that, and then, hold on, give me one second, I think it's been a little while, I'm trying to share my screen.
I can jump to that one, um, I have it here, so cheerleading football, boys soccer, and volleyball field hockey, and cross-country all had their senior nights, um, this week, this past week. And I wasn't able to make it to any, cause I was trying to do stuff after school, but I know field hockey went pretty well, and either one of the tied. Or that might be tonight, is it tonight that Thursday night, they had a big game two days ago, but it might be-
They had the senior night, like, I think last Thursday it was.
Oh, okay, yeah, I think they won, and it was pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, I know cheerleading, did they win DCL?
Yes, so we have two cheer teams, so there's a game day team and a performance team, they both won their competition, their division for DCLs.
Which is-
So they're moving on, so performance is moving on to regionals and game day moves on to states.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I know, I have a lot going on, so we're gonna go to the next one.
Boys soccer one, yes, sure.
Yeah, yeah, we heard the game.
Girls is tomorrow, that's cool.
Yeah, I know. Love playoff season watch.
I seem to not be able to share my screen unless I get in within the application, so you're gonna have to bear with us.
That's okay.
Um, the next thing we're gonna talk about is unfortunately, I was about to buy tickets, but I didn't be, I wasn't able to go. I was studying and doing college applications, unfortunately, but my friends were all in, um, our show, which are a play, which is the Picasso at the Panagio. Which was great, there was three performances, I think there were Thursday night, Friday night, and then Saturday night. Um, and it takes place at this bar in Paris where a young Albert Einstein and a young Pablo Pascal, uh, uh, Pablo Picasso meets. And it's, it's really great because, um, I think these, I mean, they would think it was a really small cast and really tight-knit, and I was just hearing about how exciting it was. And everyone really, like, the reviews were just amazing, like, I came back to school on, after the weekend, and everyone had seen it, and it just sounded amazing, so.
Um, we can jump to, I'll talk about Emmy, so we wanted to highlight that our CCHS junior, um, Emmy O'Donnell was selected to join the US, um, under nineteen, team, the national team for the US, um, we just wanted to highlight that, she's been doing an amazing job this year, like, the last two years. Just been leveling up and all, I know my friend, uh, Jasmine, she used to play with her on the team, and she's just been like leveling up over and over and over. She's, yeah, she starts, now she's just like skyrocketing, but she's going to Duke too, she committed this year, and her birthday was two, I mean, like, she's, listen, everything-
She did. Birthday yesterday, she's gonna be great then, actually.
I know, yeah, she's massive.
You can see her play tomorrow at Memorial at five o'clock.
I have to go along here, maybe, like, we'll talk about, um, what else do we have over there, Peyton, Peyton.
Oh, yeah, so one of our, uh, pathways students, I think Peyton Gagnon, was, she was selected as a captain of the Harvard University Women's Soccer Team as a part of the team's impact, uh, inclusion commitment, which was so lovely, and if we had our slides, um, I've attached a picture that we were able to find of that moment, which is just really special. We have, I feel like we have a lot of sports related things this month to talk about, um, but also in other recent news is that three CCHS seniors, um, I believe flew up to Chicago or somewhere in the Midwest, which was really exciting, to receive awards at the John, um, Durry High School Radio Awards. And that was for, uh, WIQH, and there were two shows, and so three seniors who won that. And that's Clara Zer and Gab, and Gabrielle Widden for third place for their show Scrambled Signals, uh, under the category for the best talk show. And then Gerald Dennebaum also won third place for his show People's Tomorrow, where I believe he interviewed a, like, I think it was a former senator? I think it might have been, it was a New England senator, a former New England senator, or, no, governor, that's what it was. And, um, that was for the category, the best public affairs program, so those were some major successes, and we're very proud of, I mean, our radio at CC is amazing. But, um, those students, really great for them to have been able to celebrate that and to also travel as a part of that and see some like more national recognition, so.
Do you wanna talk about, um, the sister school, the Japanese students coming, that are here?
Yes, so I think it, I don't know how frequently, it might be an annual thing, that we have our Japanese, um, exchange students come in from, um, I think it's Nanai. I don't remember how to pronounce it, my sister-
Nanai, yes.
Okay, she, um, I think was, have, uh, she's in eighth grade, my sister's in eighth grade, so not CC. But, um, I think a few of them go to CMS, and my sister, I think, has a few of them in our classes, or they stop by or something like that, and my sister's learning Japanese. And so I was hearing all these stories, um, where I think they were, they were speaking a little bit, um, and that was just really great. And Madame Pinto, one of our CCHS, uh, language teachers, hosted a sushi lunch party last Wednesday, um, for both lunches. And so I think there were twenty students, at least, maybe thirty students, um, and then all of the Japanese students who were there, and that was really great for everyone to just get together. And I saw it actually happening, I was right in the breakout space next to it, and it seemed like a ton of fun.
We can do, might wanna talk about the senior aerial photos, I know every, all the seniors were like leaving class to do them, and that was the same time as our PSAT, so it worked out well, but.
Yeah, we had a really busy day, we had the PSAT. Yeah, something else, and then the aerial photo, yeah.
Alice training, I think, was the same day.
Yeah, everything, um, do you have anything else you wanna talk about?
Um, I mean, quickly, some more things we could just touch on, I know we're, normally we're a little bit more in sync, but I think the Zoom is messing us up a little bit. But, um, other things to talk about that I was just thinking of mentioning is that the green team is launching sustainability initiatives during lunches. They, I believe, were like kind of like piloting them last spring, and they just went really well, and we're just increasing, um, compost and things like that, just to make sure we're reducing as much waste as we can at CC, um, and so those have been really great, I know that's just been starting up the past few weeks. Um, I think, we already mentioned the Toys Toold Tales Field Trip, I believe, and there, which was so exciting, I know they do that every year. We also had a social touch rugby event, which I was, I just think that's so cool, and I think it was also for newbies who just wanna learn and, um, learn touch rugby, so that sounds amazing, and the last thing we're, have on this list is that the Red Cross hosted, the Red Cross Club hosted a card making event for Children's Hospital. So, very eventful month at CC, everyone's very excited, it's getting really dark out, but I think spirits are high and we're very excited, so.
Wow, you guys were busy this month.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's been doing a lot of things, we were in the CCHS, was it, was it Concord Carlisle News blog?
Yeah.
I saw, and then the Concord Bridge, like, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of things coming out of Black History Union.
Yeah.
And a lot of follows on Instagram, I saw, thank you guys.
Yes, you had a lot of follows on Instagram, so we'll keep on.
Good, trying to get word out, all of, all the stuff you're doing.
I know, well, thank you for your updates, your updates are great, and if you have any of those pictures that you wanna share, you can send them to Dr. Hunter and she'll get them to us, like the picture of Peyton.
Or send me the slides and I'll push them out to them, yeah.
The slides, yeah, that'd be great.
Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? No, keep doing what you're doing, this is great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Evelyn. All right, and hopefully field hockey won for Maddie. All right, um, next up, we have our superintendents and chairs update, but we are gonna invite, we're gonna invite up Concord Carlisle Against Antisemitism to come and join us. We have two members of their leadership with us, we have Brian Farmer and Tal Rotman, and they are here with an update.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for off, thanks, everyone, my name's Tal Rotman, evening, um, I'm a Carlisle resident and a father of two students at CCHS. Uh, joining me this evening is Brian Farmer, we're both members of the Steering Committee for Concord Carlisle Against Antisemitism, or CCAA. For those who may not know us, CCAA formed in response to antisemitic incidents in our schools and communities. We're a volunteer, community-led initiative, working to confront antisemitism through accountability, education, visibility, and allyship. We're residents of Concord, Carlisle, and neighboring towns, Jewish and non-Jewish, united in our commitment to build a more inclusive, informed, and compassionate community. As parents, students, neighbors, and allies, we stand together to ensure that Concord and Carlisle are places where Jewish families feel safe and supportive. You can learn more about us at CCAgainstAntisemitism.org and join our Facebook page, Instagram handle to follow. Tonight, we're here with news about resources coming to support work that's already happening in our schools and community. But first, I want to speak directly to the Ju, JSU students here tonight. My daughter and son are members of the JSU. My daughter's a senior, my son a freshman, so we do have coverage across the spectrum. So I've watched up close what you, as a team, have been doing, and it matters, we're proud of you. You've created a place where Jewish students can be visible and importantly, proud of who they are, but you're not stopping there. You're building bridges, you're creating opportunities for understanding across differences. You're modeling the kind of leadership that doesn't just talk about inclusion, but actually does the work of making it real. And that extends to all students who celebrate publicly their culture, ethnicities, and gender, whoever they are, that takes courage and we see it. This past summer, CCAA applied for grant through Combined Jewish Philanthropy Center for Combating Antisemitism. CJP, founded in eighteen ninety-five, is Greater Boston Jewish Federation. Their Center for Combating Antisemitism was established in twenty twenty-four as historic levels of antisemitism were being recorded across Massachusetts and nationally. Last month, CJP awarded CCAA a twenty thousand dollar grant to support our Love Thy Neighbor Initiative. This grant is designed to increase Jewish visibility, build allyship, and address antisemitism in Concord and Carlisle. Brian is gonna share more about how we plan to use these funds.
Thank you very much for having us, we really appreciate it, we've been seeing a lot of, many of you out and about in the community, um, and we recognize how busy you are. And especially Dr. Hunter, we appreciate your leadership and support, um, for the grant. Uh, you were the straight A student who got us the support letter the day after we requested it, it was great, and, uh, that I had to hand everyone else, so I appreciate that. Um, so what are you gonna see from, from our grant, um, for us as a Jewish community here in the school and, and through the two communities? Uh, we're gonna be building presence and awareness across both towns through visibility campaigns, uh, events, and community engagement. We're gonna build stronger culture and understanding, um, and recognize that that's a two-way street, that what happens in the schools, all of them across the two towns, and in our homes, flows both ways, what they learn here, they can bring home, what they learned in the community and in their homes, can come back here. So we wanna be able to, uh, uh, address those things and, and help support that. Um, we wanna host, and we will, host cultural events in Concord and Carlisle that celebrate Jewish life, invite the broader community to participate in that. And we're gonna be investing in, uh, speaker series, um, in, and co-sponsoring them as well. In conversation and dialogue, supporting and partnering with existing programs, and bringing in new voices, whether in the schools or outside of them, creating opportunities for students and families, uh, to learn and engage. Working across the religious landscape with faith leaders to bridge gaps and create understanding, and definitely with students involved in that work. Dr. Hunter, you've said, and I've raised this in many of our conversations, that, and this is stuff with me, as you know, um, that, uh, student-created and student-led initiatives are the most lasting and effective, and, and we agree with that, we heard you on that over the summer. So the programming we're developing will feature opportunities for students to lead, participate, and shape what happens. We'll work with the JSU's teacher sponsor and students like Addie to provide structured guidance and resources, but the ideas and decisions about what their school community needs, we have to trust, uh, trust them to make some of them as much as we possibly can, and we have, uh, work to do. Um, right now, we, we have yet to receive the funding, but once we do, um, we'll be sitting down as an organization, the Steering Committee and others, to finalize our strategy, uh, determine the budgets and allocations, and identify specific opportunities. But we've always said that this is gonna be done in the spirit, um, in, of collaboration, and, um, there's a lot of opportunity here, and we hope to just take those and, and run with them, with the community. So thanks for having us, we appreciate it, if there are any questions, happy to answer them. Dr. Bruce?
So, thank you, thank for the work you're doing.
Thank you for that work.
Thank you for setting up a model in conjunction with Dr. Hunter and the DEI Commission, I understand needing to have a, a, uh, fiscal agent, DEI Commission. You and Dr. Hunter worked with the, uh, Tourism Bureau through, uh, Beth Williams to help-
She's been terrific, yeah.
Bring this together to, to exemplify a town-gown collaboration that brings this to fruition, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, it's, um, it wasn't hard, frankly, it was, uh, it almost felt too easy to bring everyone together, people were eager. Uh, for those, Beth Williams sent me the, um, grant link, the opportunity, and said, I think it was on a Thursday, she said, we may have missed this, can we do anything with it? And, um, sent it around to the group, sent it around to others, and everyone's like, let's do it, and it didn't take much to write it, it didn't take much to get the letters of support. Um, we got letters of support from, from you, of course, uh, we got them from Krem Shalom, uh, we have them from the town. Uh, of course, um, Representative Simon Cataldo, who's always been a great advocate for all the communities. And, uh, and they're our fiscal sponsor to town, so that's, uh, that's where we're at, and it's working.
Got the grant of work, we'll be ahead, I'm sure we'll be up to it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any further support or anything else that, um, the members of the school committee, um, can do for CCA?
Well, do you wanna answer that, or do you, okay. Um, well, when we get the funding, it's gonna be great to actually have, you know, that support and collaboration to listen to each other, um, and to keep the positive dialogue that we've been engaged in, um, since the news of the, the federal complaint and, um, the Swaseca issue. And we know we're not gonna be able to end antisemitism or hate against really anyone, it's about how we address it, and I think we've learned that the hard way over the summer. But I, I will address, you know, some of the positive things that will obviously expect to continue, but we'll also be held accountable to the things we promised to do. But so far, I, what we've seen is the creation of the Jewish Union, it was something we discussed at the table, you said that had come up in the past, and we spoke about it over the summer, and you said a lot, and here it is, and look the results, um, that's, that's great, and doesn't seem, it takes a lot of hand-holding, they seem, the students seem, you know, excited about it, and, uh, getting the support from other students. Um, I appreciate, we talked a lot about reporting, and you had said over the summer that you are a data-driven person, and we've learned that. That, um, the student surveys didn't necessarily collect the information on Jewish students, that it was more focused in the past, and rightfully perhaps, on the LGBT community, students of color and others, um, so I appreciate that, I think there's a panorama study of a, a survey now has that question for self-identification of a religion, so we'll see how that, you know, brings in a number, but hopefully we'll be able to see how they feel, um, those who self-identify. We know the big confusion is interfaith, families are a lot in this town, but also we have students, and we've been hearing some publicly, uh, that may not be comfortable in reporting, they're concerned about that.
Of course, that's the concern.
But, but hey, you know, the first step is, is asking, and I think that's important, an important statement, um. We've had a number of conversations here, sitting in this room, uh, once over the summer and, and once recently, and those were productive, and we're hearing some good things, and we're sharing our thoughts, and you're listening. Um, you mentioned you're having those coalition meetings, um, at some point, those, um, that you're building now.
Yeah.
Yep, as soon as the date is in, we're working on it, the scheduling is the hardest part.
We know you've been asking, um, and, uh, we appreciated that one of the first, if not the first, uh, playbook initiative that Mr. Cameron ran
Yeah.
was on a real-world scenario, um, the only concern, and I shared this with a few of you, was my son, who's in seventh grade now, uh, said that it was too short.
Yes.
Um, that they could have used more time, the conversation was good. You know, our, our hope is, um, that this spreads, and we're here to help other groups who may not be seen, may not be as heard or feel they're not as seen as heard, and may not have the same, you know, um, representation in town, just by mere fact that they don't live here. Um, so, we're here to help others, we're here to show how we apply for grants, found grants, or, or just support others. We want this not to just be, um, for the Jewish community, that's not how we're gonna help ourselves, and that's not how we're gonna help the- And that's not how we're gonna help the school or, or the towns. I don't know if Jody Spurmer showed up. She was coming.
She did.
Oh, there. I just wanted to recognize her for all of her work. Uh, she's also on the steering committee. Um, we have a lot of good people who are strong-minded, strong-willed and I'd love to do good.
Just to add maybe, um, we also, there's also some uh, upstandard bystander training that's already happened in the middle school. And I think coming up soon at uh, C C H S, which is brilliant. I actually did one that was uh, sponsored, um. Um, previously uh, at Karam Shalom, my first experience doing that and I, you know, I thought it was brilliant. And I think the students uh, having that experience regardless of it coming from a, a, a antisemitism perspective or. You know, a more general perspective, I think is, would be great for them actually. And I think they, I think it'll be very valuable.
Yeah, and that's a shout out to the Human Rights Council who sponsored that. Lots of great work.
Yeah. Um, and then also maybe Brian, just to mention, you know, the, the work that we're doing here in this group also is, you know, filtering over to the Carlisle. As a Carlisle resident, it's also filtering to the Carlisle community. We had uh, Jim, uh, superintendent Jim O'Shea. Uh, join a, a recent session as well to, you know, take lessons and see what some of the best practices are that you guys are uh, use. You've implemented here and try to take it back to Carlisle as well for our middle school as well. Um, so yeah, I, I think there's a great momentum and we just have to keep our eye on the ball and continue.
Kind of not so shameless plug. Uh, Jody has been working on a great event at Karam Shalom on November sixteenth, three to five P M. It is named uh, More Joy Less Oy. Um, I said that out loud. Um, but it's gonna be a great event, an evening of fun and, and storytelling and sharing the experience of Jew, the Jewish community, others. In a, in a fun, light way and um, it'll be good for mingling, getting to know the community inside and out. Three to five P M.
And that's been on the Instagram. I've seen that. I, I think he reposted it. The Jewish Student Union reposted that on the Instagram, I think. So it's on there.
Sure.
I don't know. Get it reposted everywhere. So it's good.
So thank you. Thank you for your support. Thanks everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us. Give it um, to Dr. Hunter and then we'll just give a brief update too.
Okay, thank you. So I will take all the great things you've heard and just add a few more. Um, in terms of, we'll stick with antisemitism for a minute. The World Language Department last night hosted a foreign film in French, um, on the Holocaust. And we had a good number of French students come. A lot of important pre-work happened and thoughtful discussions. But I think that the lens is coming from all directions. That was completely teacher-generated. We had nothing to do with that other than they saw an opportunity. And um, were able to actualize it. Um, we also have been asked to consult with another district, which I didn't think I was gonna be able to say who. But um, it went public this afternoon, this morning. So um, we met with Weston today and. Um, they were really happy to see our plan and talk with us on our work and um. Try to bring that over to their community in the best way possible for them. Uh, we had brought in our first um, L G B T Q training for the staff. So they started at Willard on Monday. They will go to every staff meeting sometime over the next number of months. And we uh, feel good to have launched that while we're still doing other things. Um, a real, the Nanae group, I just have to echo what was already said by Evelyn. Um, the Nanae visit this year's just was fantastic. Um, they were at the high school, Thoreau and the middle school. And wow, just really embedded themselves in the, in the school and really engaged. Really great for the adults to communicate and be with each other. Just really positive. It always is positive. Something. Something about this year just felt a little more magical somehow. I don't know. And um, you know, we're getting ready to send the band in April. So it was a great.
Of this year.
Of this year, yes. So it was a great kickoff to that. Um, we had a really great night last night at the middle school celebrating Ellen Garrison. Um, really great partnership with the Robbins House. I think a really solid turnout mix of the community, which. I think that's the goal we're trying to have is like, it's kids, families and community at large. Um, and a, a good number of people were able to get tours of the school that hadn't seen it yet. It was really, really great and it's the beginning of our honoring of Ellen in that building and just glad people are able to come out. And my last is a plug. Um, we're working on community reading opportunities at the elementary schools. And I've pushed this out to some community leaders just to give them first chance at the slots. On November seventeenth, twenty and twenty-first at nine thirty. Um, there's a sign up in the link that I emailed so far. It'll get bigger and bigger as I need to fill the slots. But if you got the link and you wanna sign up, please do. We're looking for one community member and we're purposely not targeting parents yet. Um, they have more opportunities. So we're gonna really try to solicit folks who aren't in the schools all the time. Um, one person per classroom across all three schools that morning and have just um, a building.
Going out to the community.
Well, so for now, I've offered it to some of the public leaders because I wanted to be sure they had opportunities to sign up before it went bigger.
Okay.
So we're kind of phasing it out.
So I have the Chair's Breakfast next week. So if you want me to pass that along to that group, I will do that. Okay.
And I sent it to a number of other community leaders, hoping they'll push it out to their groups and we'll go from there. And if next week we have to just post it, we certainly will. And this is the first. We're planning another one in spring. So we're gonna try to make these regular opportunities.
And this is the first time we've done this, right?
Yeah. It's in my goals. You'll hear about it later.
Oh, great. Alright. Um, I just have a couple of updates. Uh, Chair's Breakfast is next week, so I'll push that out. I'll send that along to Mark.
Right.
Um, I've been working with the Land use working group committee. We meet a lot. Uh, we tour all the buildings in town. Um, so more to come on that. And then the only thing I just wanted to talk about was Vision of a Graduate. I know that Sandeep and I joined that um, last week and it was really awesome. I have to say, it was a group of, you know, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, students. And there were great snacks set up by some of our wonderful students. Um, and it was just really a great night that people were brainstorming like, what do you see your vision of graduate? What are your goals? And um, Brian Miller sent out, he just sent out the feedback from that. So we'll probably pass that along to the committee just to get a look. So you can see the types of things that we talked about. And I do think this opportunity, if you didn't get to join us, maybe you could join us for another session. So it was definitely worth it. Would you say so, Sandeep?
Absolutely. The, um, we, we're all on different tables. Some, some of which we had overlap with the community members. We did. Um, but, but the, the, the discussion on the table on what people are proud of in the, in the schools is really awesome.
Yeah, it really was. And the facilitator has so much energy. Um, I had done a focus group as a parent and she just, I mean, she really sticks to her time. And it was excellent. So more to come on that, but we'll probably forward along some of that information so you can kind of see what we're doing. And I think that's it. Do you have anything?
Uh, budget?
Budget?
Budget.
Yeah, good. Yeah, go ahead. Go right ahead. I'm like, budget? Go ahead.
Yep. So uh, finance committee had their preliminary budget hearing. Was it? Time flies. End of last week, I guess.
Thursday, last Thursday.
Yeah. Um, so Bob, thank you. As always, you, they asked you for a lot of data this year on a short timeline. You got it in. But I'd say they had a, a long thoughtful discussion. Um, I think they listened to everything we asked for in the budget. We went in at three and a half percent for the um, district and negative point nine percent for the region. Um, they came out with a preliminary guideline at two and a half percent for um, district. And they met our negative point nine percent for, uh, for the region. The negative is because Carlisle is unfortunately taking a bigger share this year, um, which sees us back and forth. So definitely have some work to do. Um, we need to sharpen our pencil on the, you know, on the, between the two and a half and the three and a half. Um, they are willing to work with us, which is good. Like again, very thoughtful discussion. Um, some low-hanging fruit, not low-hanging fruit, but some stuff, you know, how we look at bus leases, for example, came up. And so we have some work to do, not low-hanging fruit, but work to do in order to uh, get to a final guideline. But um, it was a good, good discussion.
And we have heard from Carlisle. Um, Carlisle is in a budget situation, I would have to say. Do you wanna give a little update on Carlisle?
Um, I mean, it's all sort of fresh and I'm still digesting it, but um, yeah, the Carlisle Select Board met on Monday evening. Um, to, and you know, started to issue guidelines to departments and also encouraging departments. Uh, to look at a, a, where a one percent operating budget cut could be achieved. So I just learned about it today because unfortunately I could not join Monday's meeting. And um, I think in the process of finding time to meet um, with the town coming weeks.
Yeah, and continued collaboration with Ryan McLean from Carlisle and Dr. Hunter and the Carlisle and Concord FinComs. So more to come on that.
Uh, that's it.
Okay. Alright. We will move on to public comment. So our public comment period will be a period of twenty minutes. As a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you're in the room and you'd like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me and I have most of them here and you'll be called to speak. If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature and when you're called to speak, you state your name and address. We're gonna have you sit at the table today. We don't have microphones. The microphones up there are working. Um, so you can join us at the table and we will start with comments in the room and then go on Zoom. And you will have a limit of three minutes. I was asked today if we were strict about that and I said, yes, we are strict about our three-minute limit.
I'm timing it.
We have a timekeeper and if you have noticed, we do have some times on our agenda. So we're really trying to keep um, better time of our meetings. So first up, we have Leslie Fisher.
So I mean, as you've heard, I'm Leslie Fisher. I live at fifteen Edmonds Road. As an older person with no children currently in the school system, I nevertheless feel I have skin in the game. In spite of the disrespect voiced in last week's letters in the bridge. And the recent missive from the unsigned Concord Community for Great Schools newsletter. I pay taxes that compensate town employees. I vote for school committee members. And I care about the education and mental health of children who will become future business people, public servants, servants and politicians. I'm happy that the vast majority of students and parents are very satisfied with the schools. I'm appalled by the hateful effigies that have appeared around town and dismayed that this has tarnished goodwill efforts to discuss ongoing concerns. Disagreement and persistence are not hate speech or harassment. My understanding is the school committee works in collaboration with school administration. But also should be independently representing the citizens and their concerns. And this means not always acting in concert with the administration in any area. I'm frustrated that the concerns of a minority of disaffected students and parents are sometimes not addressed to the satisfaction of those impacted. Yes, administration has put policies and programs in place to condemn or combat bias and hate speech. We've heard about those tonight. This is good, but I don't think the school committee should abdicate their independent voice or their responsibility to citizens. To assess the scope or effectiveness of these programs, policies or public statements. If citizens want to hear directly from the school committee, this should happen. In spite of logistical considerations voiced at the October eighth meeting. I'm disappointed that more committee members didn't support Dr. Williams's position on this request. Please make statements condemning hate speech in any direction when it happens. And while you're at it, how about addressing the vilification of Concord's older citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. Looking online. Don't see any hands online. We will go to Serena Christina.
Hi, um, well, I'm gonna keep this quick. So I'm gonna stay under the three minutes, I promise. Um, my name is Serena Christina. You just introduced me. I have two children in the district. One on Alcott and one who just started C M S this fall. And I want to apologize to the committee and to Dr. Hunter on behalf of the vast majority of us parents here in the district. Um, because by and large, we do not come to these meetings. But um, we do not come to these meetings, not because we don't support you, but because we do. Um, we are very happy with your leadership. We are very happy with your direction and with your um, dedication. And we do trust you with our children's education and their development. So I apologize because we need to show you the support, um, which is the same support that you show our students every day. So thank you and we should come more often.
Thank you. Looking online. I don't see any. Um, Catherine Totten Rigby.
Hello, um, my name is Catherine Totten Rigby. I live at sixty-seventh Fennec Way. And I'm speaking before the committee this evening as a parent with four kids at three different schools in the district and as a Kicks for Cancer committee member. Um, the Concord Carlisle Regional School District Community, including the administration at all of our schools. Dr. Hunter, the P T Gs and P A and the students works with Kicks for Cancer to provide a positive experience for students. By fostering a spirit of unity and shared purpose through the widespread participation in events, honoring loved ones, fundraising and volunteering. This collective effort creates a supportive and empowering environment for our students. How the Kicks community and the district community work together. The entire community, including elementary, middle and high school students, were pink to show support during Kicks Week. Creating a visible and inclusive atmosphere of solidarity. The shared visual display reinforces the one-community-one-goal model. By honoring loved ones. A central and powerful element of Kicks involves students from thirty-two high school teams wearing jerseys with the name of a loved one affected by cancer on the back. The community supports the personal tribute which helps the students honor their connections and share their experience in a supportive setting by volunteering. The event is run entirely by volunteers, from event organizers to parents and local businesses. The community provides essential support by lending equipment, running snack stands, assisting with parking and helping with general event operations, making the large-scale event possible. By fundraising and awareness. Local businesses paint the town pink and teal and various school sports teams, football, golf, volleyball, cross-country, host their own associated for cancer events that we. Uh, the week of kicks such as tackles for cancer, links for cancer. This integrated approach expands student involvement beyond a single sport and raises significant funds for cancer research, giving students a tangible way to make a difference. Through guest speakers and research updates. Researchers and doctors whose work is funded by the event have joined in to cheer on the teams and share updates on their progress. This directly connects the students of this district's efforts to real-world impact, reinforcing the value of their contributions. And by creating a lasting tradition. By becoming an annual town tradition, Kicks for Cancer provides a continuous, reliable framework for students. To engage in philanthropy and community service throughout their high school years, instilling a sense of pride and shared accomplishment. None of this would be possible without the support of the district, without support of Dr. Hunter, without support of the P T Gs, of the P A's, the community volunteers. And because of this, our, our students transform a single weekend into a powerful, community-wide movement. That provides students with a sense of purpose, connection and hope in the fight against cancer. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. And next, we, let me just look online. Anyone online? Okay, now we have Paige Totten Rigby.
Um, I'm Paige Totten Rigby. Um, I came out here tonight with my mom just to talk about my experience in the Concord Public Schools. Um, for I think ten years I've been in the Concord Public Schools. I went to Thoreau Elementary School, Concord Middle School. And then now I'm a freshman at C C H S. Um, all the years I've been in the, the schools, I've loved all my teachers. I felt very supportive. Um, and I've also, I've had great classmates. Everyone in the schools are just so supportive. Um, I'm also part of the women's soccer program at the high school. Um, I was pulled up halfway through the season, so I didn't really start out on the team. But when I did join, all the girls on the team were so supportive. And it's just, it's just, it's not, the team's not only full of talent. All the girls on there are very, like, so nice and very welcoming. Um, in middle school, as part of the playbook leadership program, I think that's a great, I, that was a great experience. I really think that was. I think it had a good exposure and it also created like, really good like scenarios for us to think about. Um, yeah, I'm also involved in some of the clubs at, at the high school, which I think are great for the community.
Well, thank you. Alright, let me look online. Not see hand online. Um, Jenny Grafflow.
Hello. Jenny Grafflow, fifty-one Coolidge Road. Um, I'm really here just to say a tremendous thank you to Dr. Hunter and to our school committee for your tireless efforts. On behalf of our schools and our students. Um, I'm delighted to be able to express these sentiments because they should be said loudly and more often. But I'm sorry, as um, was said earlier, that it's in response to some of the less savory behavior in Concord as of late. Uh, my husband and I moved to Concord just over seventeen years ago with the hope of finding our forever home. And we chose this town because we perceived a real sense of community with shared values. A reverence for its rich and meaningful history and a commitment to making the world a better place. But first and foremost, because of its schools. Frankly, none of those other attributes would have even come into play if there was not a strong school system already in place. And I'm pleased to report with one about to graduate from the high school and another in his sophomore year there. And I'm pleased to report with one about to graduate from the high school and another in his sophomore year there, that the system has met everything we hoped for: academic excellence, rigor, the opportunity for growth, leadership, and debate, uh, learned accountability, empathy, community, and fun. We've witnessed so much good happening inside the four walls of all three buildings our family has been through. And I wanted to highlight that most recently, we had the privilege of attending the last unified basketball game of the season, where our daughter has been a student mentor for the last two years. And it was held during um, last Wednesday's flex block. And it's truly hard to articulate the magic that we observed. The number of students in attendance, the number of teachers, the cheering, the celebrating, the energy and the joy in that um gymnasium was palpable. It was truly a walking, breathing example of celebrating inclusivity. And I mean it when I say that's one of many examples of wonderful that we witnessed through our kids, week in and week out. I'm not here to suggest the experience has been absolutely perfect. That would be an unreasonable thing to say. But I can say with firm resolve seventeen years later, that the school system is something to be really proud of and that the leadership in this building and in all of the Concord school buildings care deeply and work very hard on behalf of its students. What I can no longer trust with the same runs resolve, unfortunately, is that early sense for shared values in this community because I have been disappointed um with some of kind of my fellow Concordians for the past several months. The barrage of letters and calls for change in leadership from residents who have had zero firsthand experience with the schools and administration has been really upsetting, to say the least. And the recent scarecrow incidents are nothing short of shameful and deplorable. So, you know, this misinformation and the personal agenda and the bullying tactics we're seeing are far too familiar. We see them every night on the news. I'd like to see Concord do better and be better. And I just wanna say that I am one of many who thank you and see you and stand with you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone online? Nope. Okay, Ellen Quackenbush.
I'm Ellen Quackenbush, two oh six Prairie Street. I was pleased that CPS Chairman Andrew Hercheck spoke the school committee norm of conversations in the public and not with the public by sending you a personal email in response to my email to the committee about the October sixth meeting. Thank you, Andrew. I sincerely hope that your break with precedent, presages increase to a dialogue with the public. That would be just amazing. I won't repeat all the points I made in my letter to Andrew, but I wanted to highlight two points. One, school culture matters. The voice of the graduate, Tracy, you talked about this, was a, it was just amazing, a great way to engage the broad public. I especially liked the word cloud that was published that emphasized two words from the students. One, empathy, and two, teamwork. These two words are essential components, in my view, of culture. That is an empathetic culture in which students' individual talents are celebrated and leveraged for the good of the whole team. We all recognize this truth. Um, after our kids graduate, they rarely operate as sole actors. Rather, they operate within a team to drive change. The CCHS committee, the CCHS committee adminis, administration superintendent work as a team to instill respect for all and reinforce empathy and teamwork to assure student success in life. And two, and Leslie said this, honestly, gray-haired retirees do have skin in the game. I am frankly tired of letters to the editor and comments in newsletters that dismiss people who look like me as irrelevant because we have gray hair and don't have kids currently in the Concord school system. On the contrary, my and our children are poster children for how CCHS can propel student success in life. Let me tell you the secret sauce. It is not academics. Rather, it's the extracurricular activities, the teams, the groups, the, you know, Jewish student union um, that gives students a sense of belonging and self-worth that really matters. For my son, it was Chuck Brown's leadership in chorus and drama. My son was often the tenor lead in CCHS musicals. For my daughter, it was the inaugural girls' ice hockey team. She was a great and strong skater, but learned pretty fast that passing and playing as a team won games. Bottom line, please engage proactively with all members of the Concord community. We are all pulling for the same student success team and we, team. And we all care deeply about the, the wonderful education our kids got and the education of the current students. We're all on the same team. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else online?
Nope.
Nope, okay, we're gonna close up public comment. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone, anything they'd like to pull off of the consent agenda?
Procedure request.
Yes.
So item. It's the Concord School Committee.
The minutes from October twenty-second?
Do we get to vote on that since this is a regional?
So we do, we can vote on it, but you're gonna, the Carlisle members will not vote. So when we vote on the consent agenda, if you are a member of both committees, you can just say aye for both. And if you are a member of Carlisle, just say aye. Don't vote on, when you're not gonna vote on that, just say aye for region. That's fine.
We, we didn't call the Concord Committee to order.
Oh, we did not. You are correct. We didn't call the Concord Committee to order.
Are you looking at me?
Yeah, I'm looking at you. I'm looking at you. So you know what? Let's just pull this off for the Concord.
Just one.
Okay, you are posted as joint, so I just wanna be. We're posted as joint, but we didn't call the order. That would be a question. Want to just, want to just call the Concord Committee to order?
Yes, I'd like to call the Concord Public School Committee to order.
So we're all set. Now we can vote on everything. So just if you are a Concord member, aye for both. And if you're a Carlisle member, aye for both. Okay, so anything else? Do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye for both.
It's very confusing, sorry.
It will always be awkward.
It's always awkward. Um, okay, our correspondence. We had a few pieces of correspondence this week. I think everybody has those. Couple of questions, couple of media requests. Um, but we have all read those. Haven't been as great as responding to everything timely. Some things, people don't ask for responses, so I don't respond to those. Um, and that's about it. Um, in our discussion, I would actually entertain a motion to move uh, item C, which is the data presentation first because we have our professionals on Zoom joining us. So I would entertain a motion to move that as our first discussion item.
I move to move data presentation up to the first discussion item. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Alright, so with that, I will turn it over to Shelley, who has, we all have a um, a copy of the data presentation. And Shelley's gonna take us through that. I believe we have Principals Stahl and Miller online and Angel Charles is also with us online, but Shelley, I will turn it to you.
Yep, um, I'm gonna share just a couple of highlights. So I know I sent you a very lengthy document and so for the public, I'm just going to really provide highlights um, so that it's more of a conversation, but just really to emphasize uh, the work that we're doing and celebrate the success of CCHS. And as you see online, we have our colleagues here who really own a lot of the success and the work of the entire team of CCHS, uh, who keep kids at the center of all this. So, let me share, or Lori, I don't know.
Want me to issue?
Yeah.
And we will be linking this, um, the, the slides that we received ahead of time. We will be linking this after the meeting for the public. And then the other thing I'll just say is a lot of this information you can find on the DESI website, on their accountability reports. So um, if, I showed Sandeep today where they were, so if anyone's having difficulty finding that, I can show you where that is and I'll probably just send the link out to that in case you wanna, you know, just go through all the DESI information for all the towns in the state.
Yes.
Would you start? When I looked at the twenty-five data compared to our fall twenty-four data, the format was different. Any particular reason for that? Did, did comparing one to the other make a little bit more burdensome?
Yeah, I think we wanted to share, be more transparent about all of the data that we could. It was also breaking out now. This year, we are breaking out as the two separate districts. Last year's was K through twelve information. So um, this year, I wanted to highlight a lot of us at the course, just solely the high school, and then really hone in on what the efforts are with the course, academic course selections. And really, that is an effort for equity, but I can share more about that. I think it was just making sure that we had deeply covered as much as we could. Um, and we've been also using a data tool, I've talked about it in the past, Open Architects. So where we continue to refine that resource, um, to, to look at data and we are in a better place with that because it's a newer platform. Just so folks know, that continually needs to be updated and we need to tweak to make it accessible and useful for the information we need. And so I think we've been really trying to work on that and the high school really has owned that. So that all educators are really using data to inform their practice.
I, I had asked a similar question too, cause, well, you can see the old data on the DESI website, but sometimes there's a bunch of blanks. And so what we, i- if it's not statistically significant or at the end number is less than twenty or something, or whatever, ten, they won't report it. So there's a bunch of blanks that we, we can try to fill in, so that was helpful.
Okay, so one, we always wanna start, like I said, I really wanna celebrate what um, I've started a little over a year ago and just really to acknowledge what the high school has been doing. Um, this is a partnership between every stakeholder within the community, as we said, right? To lift up our students and to support them academically, socially, and emotionally. Um, while we're focusing on academic success, we know that the real success and how students thrive is on, in all these different efforts that we're hearing about and that we know um, shapes belonging and inclusion and feeling like this is a place for them where they can thrive. Uh, so, but to highlight our academic successes, it really is to say that of course, as always, and it's a, been continuing for many years, Concord Carlisle is one of the highest-ranked districts in the state. And um, to share that, DESI provides a percentile of that ranking um, in terms of comparisons to other like schools or well, essentially by grade level. So nine grades, nine through twelve. So comparing us across all other ninth through twelfth grade schools across the district, we are in the ninety-eighth percentile. Um, you can only go up to ninety-nine, so we celebrate that. And um, as also, tenth grade ELA math and science MCAS achievement scores um, are significantly high. And we are at the eighty-one percentile for math, eighty percentile in um, eighty percentile in science and eighty-four percent in ELA. And just share those rankings with you in terms of comparisons to other districts. Um, to continue on that in terms of academic achievement, we often look at AP and SAT scores as well and, and that performance. So um, DESI does comparisons of us to other states, so I only have published the SAT and the AP scores from previous years. So that's where we, you see us as number one, um, and number four in math and number five in AP performance. Uh, but I can tell you for the AP exams, there were seven hundred thirty-three exams taken in twenty-twenty-five. So this is May of twenty-twenty-five. And this is our internal data that eighty-five percent scored a four or five. And for those of you who just wanna know what four or five, it's a rank, it's a score scale of one to five. Four and five are your scores that um, either colleges are going to give you credit for, academic credit for, and um, is seen as really exceeding at college-level course, um, coursework. Um, and then SAT scores, you can see those, and nationally, that's in the eighty-fifth percentile. Average SAT scores tend to be about a thousand total for a little bit higher for ELA and a little bit lower for math. Um, so there were some dips in that, but um, this is known nationally and at the state level too for some of this work. So just wanted to share that in context. So I don't know if um, Brian or Katie or anyone else here wants to share anything about your successes. I've named some, but there's so many.
Sure, um, hey, everybody. Thanks. Um, sorry, it's a little awkward. I'm like talking into a screen that is still a shared screen, so I'm not sure who exactly I'm talking to, but I hope so. There we go. Um, so I mean, one of the things that Shelley alluded to that, that we've been doing, um, that we've really been focusing on is getting our historically marginalized subgroups in, to higher-level classes. And this takes a little bit of time, of course, right? We can't just all of a sudden decide that we want um, marginalized students to be in honors classes. It doesn't set them up, up for success. But what can we do, setting the foundation in grades nine and ten? Um, and we've continued to do that and we've, we're continuing to do that so that we are having more students of color, more students who use IEPs, more low-income students in honors and AP courses. Of course, the numbers are still not where we want them to be. Uh, one of our, our sign, our math chair says she, we really want, we wanna make sure that all of our classrooms are mirrors of our hallways, meaning that we want all of our classrooms to look just the same as our, as our hallways. And we're not there yet, but we know we're not there yet, but we're actively working on that.
I would also just add that um, with that comes along, you know, the wraparound supports and making sure that the students who we are encouraging um, to be in higher-level classes and to take those risks are simultaneously being supported by the teacher and we're setting up, you know, structures for them to feel um, to, to feel like they can take the risks and be successful.
I mean, and we're really actively working to sue, so provide professional development to our teachers. Um, I think you've heard Laurie speak of the Lavinia Group last year and we are continuing to partner um, with them this year to ensure that our instructional methods are research-based and that they are accessible to all students and that we are able to support all students, as Katie mentioned.
Yeah, so that really lends itself well to um, we know the areas of focus. And this is not new news, honestly. Um, this is work that has been a part of the high school and across the district's strategic plan. Advanced coursework, AP and honors, uh, moving those students. But again, high engagement, high support, and really ensuring that students feel like they belong in those courses and have the skills and the capacity to do so. Um, and so therefore, achievement gaps, we do continue to need to close those for all subgroups. Again, that is a statewide and national challenge and we are working closely to really think about that deeply here and think about what that looks like for this community and what this high school has to offer. Around that curriculum and instruction, Brian already spoke to it. But again, it's really about, we've talked a lot about universal design for learning and making sure that those instructional methods are around scaffolds and supports. But that again, that scaffold, meaning something to support them as they access the material, doesn't mean that it continues to stay there. The idea is that those scaffolds are removed as students to continue to internalize and gain more success and skills. Um, so that is continued work. It's ongoing. Um, curriculum and just updating curriculum and making sure that it's engaging, that it builds curiosity, and it's really future-forward thinking. Thinking about in terms of, for example, vision of a graduate. What does teaching and learning look like in twenty-twenty-five and what do our young people need for the future? And it does not, honestly, it does not mean the same that it honestly looked like in twenty-twenty. The five-year trajectory of what we, I think, experience in public education and what young people are experiencing since they, they were in middle school through high school has drastically changed. And adults sometimes have to adapt a little bit more than our young people. So we know that and we know that it's so important for us to think about what matters most for young people in terms of engaging their curiosity and thinking about their future selves as well. Um, so with that, as others have shared, the idea is that we're solely focused on academics and skills and standards. Of course, we are. Rigor and excellence is a part, is really a cornerstone of what we do. Uh, but I think it's also the high school thinking about DEIB and just balance and well-being, right? So those are um, programs and all the enrichment and activities that support identity and belonging. But I know the high school has done so much around just focus groups and lunch activities and just really. But I know the high school has done so much around just focus groups and lunch activities and just really getting to know the community. Um I was really impressed last year with what they did in terms of just having every high school student a photo of them. And thinking about who was a connected adult to them, who was there to support them? How do we know them? What are their likes dislikes? What are their strengths? What are their challenges? Who do they go to? Um and really, as you know, the support that that was felt in this community, especially in the spring. When all these students are taking all of these exams and thinking about the end of the school year, their future next year um. That all just came to life, I think, and so we continue to do that and think about how do students thrive. Uh be independent learners and something that that's new this year is that Route Nine and it's been talked about here, just about. How do students build as a ninth grader their skills? How do you navigate a new school community? How do you transition from eighth to ninth grade? What does it mean to be academically prepared? How do you build those executive functioning skills? Um how do you become more of an independent learner? And how do you just positively contribute to the community of CCHS? Not again, just about yourself. Right, about your sole academics, but really about how are you contributing to others within this community? And how do you speak up for yourself and speak up for others? So I think um. Equity is really again at the forefront of what we're doing, but equity and care and well being are really, really a significant component of this. Um and just also just in terms of contextualizing all the data. It's just important to know that, so as we know, MCAS is no longer. A requirement to graduate high school. And so what I was sharing with some of the slides around. Desi slides and just state averages and trends um. Oftentimes, students, if they don't see it as a something that. Is mandated, that has a high stakes to it, which I think is important, um that not all kids need that. Uh it can be a barrier that's, for example, open response questions, the things that they just may not wanna take a risk or take the effort to. Um they notice that pattern. Um so that's where you're gonna see across the board dips have been made since twenty twenty. And and pre pandemic, so this five year trajectory has just kind of dropped and there's a little bit of up and down. Um and I think that is sometimes just trends and cohorts and such, but on average, over the last five, six years, we've seen that drop. And that's just really to share that these achievement gaps have also not closed. And in some cases, they unfortunately have widened. And we know the urgency of that and we know, but the that also this is. Really, really challenging work, right? This is people, this is a work around young people and shaping their minds and supporting them. So what Katie is sharing about wraparound supports and all that. Intervention, it does take time. It's going to take a while for things to stick. Um and we are not pivoting to saying new initiatives. I think we're really just around staying the course and being really laser focused on this work. Um and intentional with it because we can get distracted with so much other happening, other things happening. But again, keeping kids at the center is what we're trying to do. Um also, just to say that. This is all high level data and I and I think we all take the approach that. These levels of data, we use kind of the guide of street data so that when we're looking at MCAS and AP and SAT. We're calling this a lot of the street and sat uh or I should say the map and satellite data. It gives us a direction. And we can find trends and patterns. It ne- doesn't necessarily tell the whole story. And it doesn't tell the story of our students and their experiences and what we may have to do to individually support. One person, no one size fits everyone, we know that. And so we are trying to be as intentional with each and every student that we have in front of us. And what works best for them. Um and it does sometimes mean taking risks around enrollment, say. Encouraging a student um to take a higher level course, but knowing that sometimes that stress. And what's going on in someone's life may not make it keep, they may feel that if you're not earning an A. You should not be in that AP course, that that honors level course. And that stress can be burdensome and they say, I don't know if I wanna carry that weight too. So there's a lot of complexity to this, so. We just, we of course make benchmarks and goals and wanna increase every year. It is also going to have some ebb and flow to it and we, but again, we're going to be persistent and continue this work. Um and I really think that is the majority of what I wanted to share and just because. Um where you may see some gaps in data as Andrew had shared. Uh when you have low end sizes, like the student sizes, and some of our subgroups are fairly small numbers. So there will be some blank data points, but that's not to say we're not doing that at the school and the classroom level. Uh the leadership team at the high school is really laser focused on individual kids. So you may not see it here in this presentation, but you're going to see if you're in the buildings, that's what we're doing. We're talking about kids. We're talking about what they need. We're talking about how to. Build coherence and collaboration and that collective work that we need to do to support each and every student. So I think that's kind of the big, the big takeaways and love to answer any questions.
Before you go to questions, the one thing I'll name and this is. We've gone back and forth over the years over whether we do K twelve or just the high school. I have to note that in a high school conversation, what K eight sends them is really important. And we are, here's the headline for two weeks from now for the Concord Committee, um the middle school's been recognized for closing. Back to pre pandemic rates and been invited to a Desi forum to share practices. So that's exciting news and I think that's gonna mean the high school receive kids receives kids that um are are further. Than the ones they've had as we, you know, work work harder at the lower grades. Of course, we talk with Carlisle and what they're sending us as well, so just wanna note that it's. An important piece of a high school discussion is, it's not always their. Um control to to do all this work. It really depends what they receive.
So so Laurie, to that point, um what kind of longitudinal analysis can you do to see just the growth in the kids versus?
Yeah, so we we look at, you know, I know you've looked at SGP with MCAS, which is in ELA and math, so we can see that individually. Um Open Architects is where our real data powerhouse is now because it. It's the whole entire student history at a glance and at a fingertip. So the, you know, real work of getting that robust over the last couple of years. Means now that a child's entire academic profile and growth. Is now at every educator's fingertips. Do we still have a room to go on everyone being adept at it and accessing it fluidly? Yes, it's. Still a work in progress, but the tool is there now.
Yeah, you can look at um in Open Architects and the real high school really wants to see that, right? Like in terms of. You can see that trajectory from kindergarten. If a student started here in kindergarten. Um that cohort, like it will it will map students by that cohort year or graduation day. Or year so that you can follow them and look at that historical trend. Some of the challenges here with MCAS is you're thinking about different cohorts. Uh so we would have to look at it diagonally in terms of like pulling the data from there and that's what Open Architects helps us do. Um it also is requiring us to tighten up some of that data because it's uh reported from multiple. Resources and AP and so that it's open art, we've had to work with Open Architects to be able to make sure that that data is tight. And um following the student. And then, of course, but when a student comes in later in the, you know, if they come in from Carlisle. Making sure that we're working with Carlisle to get that data into. So we have to really think about that integration of that and again, as Dr. Hunter shared, just making sure that. Educators really feel confident and comfortable. Um so right now, we're really focusing on the admin administrators and teacher leadership in that, so. Um the high school can talk more about that in terms of anything around looking at data and cohorts and historical.
But why do, why do we give any credence to MCAS anymore? I I'm just seeing what you're saying, like. I'm thinking myself in high school, I would have circled A on every Scantron sheet and doodled and then just. You know, try to get to New London as quickly, like that's what I would have done. And so now I'm thinking like, does this even, does this data even matter?
I mean, I think it still matters to a degree of the state standards, so it is tracking state level standards. And trying to assess in those three content areas, how students are performing. It does um compare us and give us some trend data, right? So it allows us to look at. Where those gaps are, compare us over time to other districts to make sure. Particularly, say if there's another higher performing district doing something, we can, you know, we can learn best practice.
But what I'm saying, like, is that data even, does it matter? Like, are kids taking it seriously, like I?
I think kids, I mean, I think Brian and Katie would talk more about, do kids take it as seriously?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would say to your point, Andrew, right? Like, we're talking about high school kids and they know, right? Like, they know that it's no longer. You know, part of their graduation requirement and so um I think that's a factor and I also think like. Our kids do take things seriously. Um but is it a hundred percent of kids taking it as seriously as we want them to be? No, I'm sure it's not. Um but I will say for the most part, I mean, we had really good attendance. Um for MCAS and I do think that our kids, for the most part, um are, you know, are keeping. Keeping it at the forefront in 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 terms of trying, but I do think that the fact that it's no longer required is definitely. Um it's a factor.
Yeah, I mean, attendance is different than effort and I'm just like, I don't know how long the um. High school MCAS is, I'm assume, is it a couple days, but you I mean, you could repurpose those days and do something else, you know?
I guess.
Question about the um percentages, so yeah, went through this. And we've got a number of slides in here, uh black students, metro students, uh students with disabilities. And they all have percentages percentages associated with them, but they don't have the total like, you know, percent of what? There's no total amount of those demographics anywhere in the presentation, so. Uh we have seventy two percent of black students enrollment in math and in rich courses, but what does that translate to?
Right, you mean in total, some total sum numbers?
Yeah, like what what's the whole, you know, like what, you know, a percentage, you know? You know, one of two people is fifty percent, but um what's the number of students that we're measuring?
Yeah, we wanted to um.
I didn't see it.
We didn't, some of the end sizes are small. Um and we didn't want in a public sharing of a document, just like the way that. Desi won't share under twenty um. For student privacy. So we didn't want anyone to. Be able to name or know, oh, I know who those students are, who are they're in or not. Um it's also because internally, we have, so Desi, in the way that they. Use their their, how they label or assign your racial demographics, if you are multiracial. But I de- it's it's considered a separate category. But you can be, you identify as multiracial in a racial group. So we internally are looking at students and how they racially identify. And so if you are mixed race, black, white, whatever it might be, so the numbers can be misleading. In terms of if you were to compare it to our total number as Desi reports X number of students. Um so we wanted to show that we are making gains in representation of those students. And Brian and Katie, I don't know if you have more about that in terms of why. The numbers might be a little bit wonky.
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of the slides that um Shelley used are also slides that we used at our opening faculty meeting. I mean, as Shelley said, we our number one focus every day when we get to school is about equity. And creating an equitable experience where all students show up to CC. And that regardless of the color of your skin, your income status, or your, if you use an IEP, that you. Can achieve at high levels at CC. So these slides are, they are high level. It's a fair point. I take that feedback. Um and we wanna, we're continuing to do the work. We know that we have work to do and we have a lot of things to celebrate as well.
The progress is evident. You know, I can see over time that there has been progress made in all these different areas, but when it comes down to. Um trying to digest the information, it's it's hard to understand, like, what are we talking about here? And um and it would just be helpful to have an idea of a number associated. And I did go to Desi to see and I knew that the subgroups are too small to be recorded on Desi, but I was just curious. Cause we have the information on what that possibly was.
We do, and we discussed that.
We did and the hesitation was the public piece, which is why Desi doesn't. So we're happy to talk with school committee because the numbers are so small, we just wouldn't wanna put it out in the community.
Right, and we know which grades kids are taking and, you know, it just, it feels hard to do.
So.
Questions, yeah, Sandy, go ahead.
So Bob, Shelley really did give you a run for your money with with all the.
On the numbers.
I I I had what about twenty or so questions, um we wouldn't have to go into all the details, but there are a couple I I I do wanna bring up. Um. We benchmark against certain districts, right? Can you share why we chose those districts?
Sure, so I pulled uh a significant, I think it's on slides.
Twelve, fifteen.
Twelve, yeah. So I pulled districts that were, have been performing well. Um that we often compare ourselves to, that are known to do well. Um. They are also a good number of metro districts. Um and they're also just districts that have, again. Done well historically and have been named, whether they're in Boston Magazine or US News and World Report. So I and I pulled some neighboring districts, so that's where you get that entire list of communities. It's hard. Uh but you can see that range and where we are and where we fall into that, so. That was the comparison, um districts that are right near us, but then also districts across the state that also do well. I can't really share more.
No, that's fine, that's enough.
Looking at these numbers, one thing I noticed for English and math in a lot of districts is the drop from twenty one to twenty. Two, which I just think is interesting because in twenty two, you have a whole other year of normal.
Yeah.
But a little bit more back to normal. Um is there anything else besides the pandemic that? That we, that Desi is permitting, you know?
Right, that that decline or that dip. I do know that because twenty twenty was not a testing year because of the pandemic. Twenty twenty one was a sh- uh reef MCAS, so it wasn't a full MCAS test. Um.
And did the state give us like three years to, wasn't there a guideline from the state?
There's a formula that we're still had a held accountable for that we have to be on a certain trajectory back. To pre pandemic and that's what the accountability formulas are doing? So we're still held accountable for being on that path?
Yeah.
But yeah, I think it's probably, she's right, the uh MCAS was completely different.
That's good to know.
I think it was a bit.
Abreviated in twenty one.
It was abbreviated, yes.
Twenty two.
So really to compare twenty two to twenty three. See if the growth continues, yeah.
Yeah, you almost have a reset there at twenty two and on, cause everything before that is twenty nineteen and pre pandemic and.
Yeah.
The whole world shifted, so, yeah.
Right.
That's just good to know.
And even, I think we're post pandemic, I mean, I don't even wanna talk about the pandemic anymore, honestly.
The kids do.
And I do think that just the context of public education right now, what our young people are experiencing. I think just the context is very different about how students learn today than it was even five years ago. So we have to really think about that as our our young people and what they're growing up with. And there's a lot of rigor that is expected of them and there's a lot of stress and, you know. The high school is really trying to address that as well. Well being is also at um. The forefront.
And MCAS is a, as much as it's a criterion reference test, the proficiency levels are. Formulas behind the scenes as to where those cutoffs are going to be. So you know, there's just a lot of variables that can play in that are hard to track, so. Um take that down so they can see. Um take that down so they can see.
Uh on chart eleven, actually, the the science, the SGP is missing, uh was was the reason why that?
Yes, so they only do SGP for grades four through eight and then grade ten, um. They do not do it in science because it's only tested in grades five, eight and ten. Uh so they don't have enough data because you're talking about the year over year growth with that student's group. So I think because of the data that they have at the state and uh even within one district, they don't. They don't think it's valid to be able to have a growth percentile.
And sticking on the topic of science, uh we haven't, I haven't gone to Desi, looked at it solidly. Um it would be great to understand how uh our girls are doing in science compared to our boys.
Yeah, that's definitely on the data, uh on Desi's data, so we can pull that up.
And I'll send everybody a link to, and I should have done this before, to the Desi accountability report. So just so you can go in there and you can look year by year and you can sort.
I I think it was in the in the.
It was in one of the slides, okay, okay. I love that website.
Quote me on it, but I do think um females do. Pretty well and may actually um outperform males, I for some reason I have seen that data here.
So again, if if not, we should, you know.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Timekeeper, how much more time do we have on the subject?
We have more time, yeah.
You're watching the time.
Yeah, loosely.
So if you don't mind, one more question.
Yeah, of course.
On the AP scores, right, from chart thirty two, I think was, the the increasing trend of the percentages, that's great. It would be great to have that baseline against the number of tests. To see if the number of tests are going to do or are we, you know, preventing kids from taking tests, so they get higher scores kinda thing.
What's gonna be exciting is as we bring uh English online as an AP, it's, cause right, right now when kids take the English one. It's then trying to take their coursework with us and apply it to the test, or they're doing things outside of school. And I think that's gonna be a really great data point to watch as we have more accessibility to the English.
Yes, sometimes kids will actually take the AP English, we don't offer, we are now going to offer AP English. But I might have had a student in my house, it was like, yeah, I feel like taking the test. And I was like, but you're signed up, she's like, well, I'm fairly taking it right now, and that can happen in these high school kids in the spring, if they're, you know. Depending on where they're at and what they're stressed about, they make choices about, they might have been signed up and then choose not to take it.
And and that shows it as a low score or?
Uh no, they just don't take it.
Yeah, there's this drops of participation rate.
Yeah. I think that happened a lot more in English because it was one of those things, it's like, well, I didn't take the course, so I don't know how I'm gonna do and I don't feel like taking it. Just a personal anecdote. Any other questions, Lina? Good, Michael? Good, Andrew?
We're we're five minutes behind our schedule, but we're having a good discussion.
Yeah, guys, just one more question, um so looking at slide nine through eleven where the different groups, um you know. Looking at how the different groups performed against the state and obviously everything is, seems to be above the state average. But if we were to look over the course of, I'll say the last, since twenty twenty two. Are we see, like, do we have any concerns with any of the groups, like are we overall seeing progress? Are we seeing any dips anywhere?
Can we throw that to Angel Charles who's online and hasn't spoken and has the challenge of talking about special education in MCAS?
Of course.
Yeah, hi, um so I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention, first and foremost, I wanna applaud Brian and Katie for engaging their. Faculty and staff members in really difficult conversations about access and equity gaps. I know that work has been a labor of love for both of them and I think. That they should be highlighted and applauded for doing that because this is a really difficult conversations. Um I also wanna talk a little bit about, um we do have some students who actually don't take the regular MCAS. They take MCAS alt, um which regardless of how they perform on MCAS alt. Counts in a negative light as an, as um technically someone who's not achieving the guideline, so. We have many students who um engage in the very rigorous uh process of compiling MCAS alt binders. Um to show that they're making, you know, the progress that they're making towards standards, but they may not necessarily be on track to. You know, um potentially. Receive what used to be a regular high school diploma with regards, because it was an MCAS um requirement. So that is another factor that I wanna bring to everyone's attention because I'm not sure that folks understand that MCAS alt. Um does not necessarily get factored in at a rate that is um commensurate with the effort and work that students put into it.
Um Angel, I just wanna say, I was on your meeting a couple weeks ago with parents, um. Talking about the IEP process and the special ed process in the district, and I was very impressed with the way that. All of the staff in Concord were explaining to the parents how things go. Um I have a high schooler um that takes MCAS with substantial adaptation in another district. And so uh just having the MCAS not be a requirement for graduation, like it changed my life. Because now he can get a diploma and it's um, it's great, so I was paying special attention to the kids on IEPs. The kids with um, you know, uh high needs when I was reviewing all this data, um. Do you feel like the district is moving in the right direction as far as that's, I know it's it's like hard to measure because there's so many factors involved with that. But how do you feel about that?
I mean, I feel that essentially with, when any student sits down to take. And and ideally, obviously, the accommodations that students get when they sit down for MCAS are the same accommodations that they're given. When they are sitting down to access any course assessment that they're taking. So that's really my focus and that the students who are on IEPs, that their IEPs accurately reflect. The level of accommodations and modifications that they need so that when they are sitting down to do a quiz. The MCAS, any sort of assessment, the SATs, that they are provided with the accommodations that the team has recommended so that they can. Access whatever assessment they're sitting in front of to the greatest extent that they're able to.
I mean, I think as, to really just answer your question, Brian, I think we just aren't always staying attuned to those. Levels of need and where those achievement gaps have persisted. I don't think from twenty nineteen, and I think Brian and Katie would be able to share more about that if there's any kind of. Dramatic dips, because I think we're pretty much close to that pre pandemic, if we wanna use that as our baseline. I think we're trying to do more than that in terms of just really closing those gaps and again, access to rigorous, high level content and. Really letting students explore their pathways and that's why we're providing more advanced coursework. Right, adding more AP and honors, um and just thinking about ways that kids can really demonstrate what they know and. Really help build their passion for what they wanna think about after high school.
My only last comment, we're spending a lot of time talking about the overlap of, right, because. Students in these categories, maybe in multiple categories.
Yeah.
So we're really spending time diving into where those overlaps are between special education and certain, you know. The the black students, for example, and where those performance place, you know, how is that lining up? Um so there's all these variables to consider that we're trying to dive into. Uh, cause you can't just say it's special education because.
Right.
Kids may be multiple things and then is that becoming co-cofactors? Versus single factors and that means we have to look at the approach from all those lenses and not just one.
I'm sorry, I'm fixated on this, but do we even have to take them like that?
It's still, okay, sorry, Andrew, it's still the law that we have to offer the test and sit the children in front of it. We cannot make them take it.
Get these accountability results, um and the participation rates still matter. So that if you have any student group that is not participating, you could be assigned. Intervention as a, as a district or school.
I wasn't trying to be funny, and then when I took the MCAS, I got, you could get scholarships to.
Yes, yes, you can still, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I think maybe this is highlighting some parent education that needs to happen around MCAS and how they, like, even though it's not a graduation requirement.
Right.
Parents need to know it still is.
Oh, we're still held very accountable, we're not ninety five percent of the participation aggregate or in any subgroup, you're going on a corrective action plan.
Yeah.
And I think that's a thing we gotta keep, you know, opt outs, they come and go in trends. And I think our worry is be able to start opting kids out and then we're gonna be in some corrective action, you know, so we just, I'll have to take it seriously still.
And I, and I. I I do think that, you know, now we also offer the PSAT and the SAT at the high school.
Yeah.
And I think it just feels like another testing environment when they're taking MCAS and our kids are really good at. They, I mean, they thrive in that environment, but again, this is only one measure of assessment, you know, there's assessment that happens. Within classrooms all the time, whether it's, you know, teacher based or, you know, what it is, so this is just one measure.
I mean, our level of concern for the three grades that are gonna have four tests.
Yeah.
Eighth grade already does and five and ten will, uh I mean, that just is. Just decimating what's happening in the spring in classrooms to be testing that much. There's no answer, we have to do it, but it's really, really hard, so we're gonna just keep looking, I think we should keep talking about this part of it.
Yeah, yeah, cause you do lose instructional time, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, may maybe a question is more like, is MCAS the right metric three years from now or four years from now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know the state is actively in the discussion of graduation requirements and it looks like there's some proposals for a different. Test, I think there's an attempt to work around them, am I supposed to say this, work around the vote? Um and put an assessment back in, yeah, so.
But it is true about the um just parent education and student education, that MCAS is an accountability measure. Um and that when last, when the vote happened, however long ago that was, I can't recall. Um it was a lot of families, I think, and voters were not, they thought it was just eliminating it altogether. And they didn't realize that it's just, it's not eliminating it, it's just making sure that it doesn't become a barrier to getting a high school diploma.
It's a federal law, we have to have an accountability.
And it is an access and opportunity issue because some students just do not test well. It is not the full measure of what a student knows. And so it was harming more students of color and these historically marginalized groups, students with disabilities. Because if you cannot pass it, um you will not be given the the state's recognition of a high school diploma. Yes, yes, if the local high school can give you the local diploma, but it's not recognized by the state.
If you wanna talk more about MCAS, next Wednesday Carlisle will be doing a dive, um and just one thing I thought to share. Um Jim gave me a bit of a preview, Carlisle's last year's eighth grade was number one in the state for ELA math and science.
Wow, good news for CCH, yes. That's exciting, oh congratulations, that's amazing.
Great, great, okay.
So next year, there'll be a tenth grade, that class that scored.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Anyone else before we close up this discussion? Um thank you to Brian, Katie and Angel for joining us for this, I think that was super helpful. Thank you to Shelley for putting all this data together, it was actually really super helpful.
And that'll get linked tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night.
Thanks.
Um and that brings us, actually, it's actually better that we did this way to our first reading of the competency determination policy. So maybe if we can share that, let me see if I can pull it up, um this is a first read to our policy. Laurie, do you have it, I'll see if I can find it, I'll I'll get it, I'll get it, that's okay.
Do you have it up, can you screen share, Shelley?
Yes.
If Shelley's gonna talk, you see this.
That would be great.
While she's queuing it up, and I know you started to say this, but I'll just finish it, um. Right off the conversation we just had, like we said, um competency determination now is dictated by policy. So without the MCAS, and we got very good at this in COVID, without the MCAS, we have to have a prescribed set of coursework that. Students must pass to reach graduation, that sits next to the graduation policy, which is. Credits and things like that, so you now need to have both. So this is the template the state has provided us, we filled in our local information, which Shelley will go through. We owe the state an approved policy by December thirty first, so this would be your first reading. With the second one at your only meeting in December, just so we keep saying that, at your only meeting in December on the seventeenth.
Right, so this in lieu of MCAS as a graduation requirement to show. In those content areas of ELA math and science, and then also coming up in twenty twenty seven. Is that students need to demonstrate mastery in US history. So that explains that around, instead of MCAS, what, how are we going to determine? That a student is eligible to graduate. And so of course we have all our coursework, we have our graduation requirements, but we also have to explain to the state. What our requirements are, and for example, if a student who comes in. Middle of the school year or junior year or a newcomer student from a different country or whatever it might be. In order to demonstrate their mastery and competency in these content areas, so it it is a formula. It's essentially us filling in within E- English, math, science, US history. What the specific courses that will will um satisfy those requirements. Um and it just articulates the courses, how many, whether it's a semester course or a full year course. And if a student needs to take that, the two semesters, the full year, um and then how we do. Potential competency determination reviews and appeals process. If we feel that someone has not satisfactorily passed that course for full credit. So it explains for students with disabilities, English learners, and then like I said, late enrolling students. And then it explains the appeals process with a panel review and transcript review in case um something that was reviewed. In terms of courses they've taken that they might think are equivalent, say from another state or somewhere else. That um they have this process and this due process um to into what they get the certificate of permit. Uh which is like what MCAS would provide high school students. So that's really it, it it articulates the courses, um we will obviously update this. Every year with, if the programs of studies change and any coursework. You know, can be added in terms of additional AP or other courses that might be able to. Um meet that competency determination for that subject area.
And Shelley, can you just talk about um the process for developing this, like who was involved in this process for developing this?
Yep, the whole high school leadership team, um so Brian and Katie, of course, and then all the department chairs.
Okay.
Um and the assistant principals, um guidance, of course, the guidance team. So it was everybody who reviewed this, looked this over and then we just uh tightened it up a little bit.
Okay, great, so this is, so everyone's had this, this is our first read.
Mm-hmm.
As Laurie said, our second read would be on December seventeenth where we would vote on it, does anyone have any questions, comments on this?
I just had one question, it's a very thorough policy, uh but my question. I'm also mindful that you always say I cannot sort of reflect back at my own high school experience uh in the nineties, but. Looking at this, and I think this is a question the community might have, so I wanted to ask you, the coursework feels light? And what I mean by that is like, for me to graduate, I had to do four years of English.
This is just, this is just the replacement of MCAS.
Yeah.
You also have to meet everything on our graduation policy, which is what you're thinking.
Perfect, I'm glad I asked the question then, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's distinguishing.
Yes.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to keep messaging.
Nope, perfect.
It's like our. Course load here, your four year course load is a lot more rigorous than what the competency determination. The state is expecting.
And it.
To replace just the MCAS, no longer being a graduation requirement.
So that's like a minimal competency determination.
And then the district has the ability to make it more difficult based on the ability.
Yes.
Yeah, our graduation requirements are much, much more broad and robust.
So so Shelley, you you spoke about MCAS again. I see, I saw that one of the, the ways you determine your later touring students. MCAS was one of those, but if it's not one of the options.
Can be a.
It can still be if they've taken it in another, um, if, for example, they've come from another district or another state and they wanted to take the MCAS, um, there could be an opportunity for them depending on their transcript, it's like, it's really an independent transcript review of students and in special circumstances.
So somebody moves in junior year. Then you'd have to either look at their transcript or all their coursework, you could give them the option to take the MCAS.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, sorry.
But you wouldn't get the results for another few months, right?
Right.
Right, you'd get it their senior year, so if they were junior, that would be.
It's, it's not.
It's really for the states, we have our own graduation requirements, it's the state's expectations for their endorsement essentially of a high school graduate.
And when you think about like the different abilities, do you think about a, a child on IEP or with, you know, high needs or special needs? You're gonna want it to be something that they can complete, so they can graduate as well.
Right.
That's kind of like where I brought my mind, and then the, the school itself has its own.
Yep, exactly.
Right.
Th- this is not the policy per se, but can, can you share why the US history was added?
Because there's an MCAT, there, there's a testing coming for the tenth grade MCAS in history. So we have to put a placeholder in there for when that is live. It's active now in eighth grade, we'll have scores for you in a couple of weeks.
Now up and running, it was a pilot year, the previous year. Now, when we do the CPS, share that data in a couple of weeks, you'll see the first results of civics. Um, and then we'll see how that applies to accountability, I'm not sure.
I'm grateful they asked us to think about it now, so we don't have to bring you the policy back in gear and say, oh dear, now we need history.
Right.
So, at least it's.
So yeah, you think about like, say, what the um, that ballot measure was, but where the state was going was still continuing with assuming MCAS, um, testing was going to continue to happen. And that they should expand it beyond just those three core subjects of English, math and science and add more of the social studies, the history and civics. But it's somewhat not in line with how we're thinking about MCAS now is not a, a strongest, you know. Measure.
I expect we're gonna see some fluidity here as all these, the governor's committee keeps talking and the legislators get in it and I think there's gonna be an ongoing, what's required to graduate conversation.
Right, yeah.
One last question. I, I know we're not voting on this today, so it's maybe too early. What's the process once this is put in place to revisit a specific timeframe where you will see if this is working? Set in stone for good.
Policies can always come back, so I think we'd execute it this spring. Where we map kids out against it and give you feedback on whether we're, whether it's working or not.
Anyone else?
No vote, right, so no votes.
No vote, so no, no, so you'll see this again on December seventeenth and then we'll take a vote, so we're compliant with the state. Um, okay, onto Bob, our F, our FY twenty-six first quarter transfers. I think there's a, a memo, but there's an item in your packet.
Somebody's sharing right now, I can't share. Should be good.
I just closed it, it should work.
Oh, now I can, thank you. Okay, so um, I'm presenting the first quarter, it's a little past the first quarter, we typically do this, um, because September thirtieth is so early in the school year, um, about now. Um, so we have an update a little bit past the first quarter through the end of October on where we stand for Concord Carlisle Regional School District uh, versus the budget. And uh, this is the traditional format we've been using the last three years, we have it by the, the DESI classifications of expenses. When I'm done presenting, I'll be requesting approval for um, the transfers listed in the second column, which net to zero. Which are transfers between the different main categories of accounts. And so, um, again, just at a high level, um, if you look at the uh, the total at the far right. Um, you can see that we have, um, you know, not factoring in um, my, my math at the bottom there. Eight million dollars left on our budget. Um, I then know that we're gonna spend all the fixed charges, those are for things like insurance, including health insurance, um, and then our debt service, uh, those payments come due at various times throughout the year. I know we're gonna have to pay them, they're fixed amounts, so really what we have available is about two point five million over forty million dollar budget. Um, so, uh, that's about, um, you know, it's a, it's a small percentage, we, we encumber all of our salaries at the beginning of the year. Um, so while the forty million seems like a very large number, pretty quick in the year, we've kind of identified where we're gonna spend most of it. Uh, the transfers that we have so far are, are driven by some changes from our budget assumptions. The first one is in the district leadership and administration category, um, we had a, a, a staff member uh, notify us of retirement, um, bef- while we were building the budget, we made an assumption that we, the person's a instructional technologist, we made a budget assumption that we're gonna find a young technology whiz. Um, and we found an experienced technology whiz, so it, the cost was forty-two thousand more. The role's a little bit more instructional support now than it was in the past, but that's the um, the explanation for the forty-two thousand. Um, the instructional leadership, um, we have some people that notified us of retirements after um, we started building the budget and some of them uh, pretty late in the year. So that uh, instructional leadership savings of a hundred and six is, is mostly on uh, salary savings. Other school services is primarily special ed, transportation costs and homeless uh, transportation costs. We have a couple students who have moved to another shelter and have opted to school in Concord and we're paying for that transportation. The um.
And we will get reimbursement.
We'll get reimbursement next year, um, so it'll be some, the variance we carry next year, it'll be favorable revenue that we get next year. So we end up whole in the long run, but in the operating budget, it really doesn't help us. The um, maintenance operations is fairly small, um, this is happens, um. Don't have, have any detail on that, it was really, I didn't think notable, uh, wasn't significant enough that I thought it mattered any comment. But I just drew attention to it by talking about it. So, uh, the fixed charges and debt and retirement service, um, there's just a, a little switch we made. Um, we have, most of our debt service is bonds, um, we have one that's a bond anticipation note. Um, because of the amount's small and it doesn't make sense to bond something for that amount because the the uh, the debt issuance costs uh, will exceed any savings we get on, on doing a bond versus a ban. Uh, it's a lot of detail, so the, the, the long and the short of this is that band interest should be classified as fixed charges and not in debt service and the rest of the debt retirement, debt service and retirement should be debt principal and um, an interest um, on, on long-term debt. And only principal repayments on bands, so that's really just a reclassification to align with DESI requirements. Um, and again, this is early in the year, these numbers will, will change as we go, um. But at this point in the year, there's not a lot of significant changes to uh, we budget in this district.
Any questions on that? Very much part of just our formal process, so I would entertain a motion to approve the budget transfers for quarter one.
So much.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, we have five, you said to count, so I'd be stepped out for a second. We have three members, alright, uh, and then on to the capital budget.
So this is the first time we've uh, developed, last year we provided a memo on this, um, just um, in terms of historical context. The building is not that old, it's eleven years old. Um, and I've, I've talked to consultants about um, kind of, you know, when to anticipate, you know, significant capital needs. And they said, you're, you're probably in a safe space. So, um, we went through an act, internal exercise this year to, to identify what we knew and were aware of. Um, there are some things um, that have shorter lifespans than other things. But this is kind of the first kind of way we're presenting in this format, we'd, we'd welcome any feedback. Um, certainly share um, what we have here, why it's here. Um, and um, so I'm gonna go through that now and I'll talk about the top section here are the items that we're presenting that we know that we need um, over the next few years. Um, the classrooms across the school, um, don't think, some, we've, we've had like a couple that have been painted here and there upon request, um, as we replace, um, the uh, the touchscreen boards in the rooms, which are original to the building. Um, we're gonna need to be doing some painting to, to repair those and we, we're thinking that over time, we're replacing the panels over two to three years. Let's at the same time use that as the time we paint, um, do the painting, um, so also working in the hallways in the bathrooms, so this is an estimate of the cost over the next three years. Um, we also need to update paint numbers in the parking lot so that the numbers are visible, um, especially the upper turf area. We think this funding is adequate for, for all, all the numbering we need to do, if it's not, we'll focus on the upper turf area first. Um, we have lighting control systems that are obsolete. Um, one of them I think we're gonna have to do um, now or this year, um, there's a I won't get into the, um, we, to what the type of models are, but there's an obsolete model that, um, if it, if it stops working, we can't do repairs to it. We need to upgrade and replace it in a newer version. Um, we anticipate that this is gonna happen with multiple of, of these over time and eventually we're gonna want them to be all, all the newer versions, so we're, we're estimating that we're gonna need to replace we're gonna end up doing one this year out of our operating budget, uh, one um, in twenty-seven and then two from FY twenty-eight through thirty-one. Uh, is what we're anticipating. H-back rooftop units, um, not gonna, we, we, we've had one, um, I think it was FY twenty-four. Where um, s- the compressors, there's multiple compressors in the rooftop units. Um, and to, they're also, I don't know, seen the units, they're, they're very large and the compressors are too heavy to carry up um, in through the building and you actually have to get rent a crane to get up and replace them, so the cost of the compressor itself and the labor in renting a crane is about forty thousand dollars. Um, we've only had to replace one so far. Uh, the use, useful life estimates vary, like that one was probably a little bit early, but we, we're thinking, you know, when we get out to FY twenty-nine, we're about fifteen years out. We should, we should plan that we're gonna probably need to replace some of these. Uh, we can't easily absorb a forty thousand dollar unexpected expense, so, um, we've I think there's, um, I think there's ten to twelve units on the roof, so this would just replace the first four and I threw FY thirty-one.
Do you think that you guys should account for some escalation in that timeframe?
Possibly, that's a good point, um, um, you know, maybe it is a little bit more, um. I think we had to replace multiple compressors in the first unit, might not have to replace all the compressors in another unit, um. So we can certainly, I'll certainly talk to the facilities director about that, thank you. So the next one, um, might everybody's seen, uh, I think, or if you haven't, um, but the Doug White new turf is fantastic. Um, it include, the, the cost to install that, it's about twice the size of Memorial Field. Memorial Field's turf is original, um, to the, i- at ten years old. It's typically the life of artificial turf is close to ten years. We're getting at a point where they do something called G max testing, I don't know what it stands for, but I know it basically tests um, the amount of, uh, yeah, how safe the turf is for athletes. Um, and as they do that, um, they, you know, s- noticed that there's levels of some deterioration, not as bad as Doug White was, but we feel it's prudent to pay to factor in a design in FY twenty-seven and to plan for the installation in twenty-eight, that would be the summer of ju- two thousand twenty-seven, FY twenty-eight, July two thousand twenty-seven would be two thousand, um, would be FY twenty-eight. So that would mean, um, for the fall, two thousand and, um, twenty-seven sports season. You know, potentially would be targeting to have this in place. Um, we'll see what the results are of the testing too, if it tells us it can be longer, then great, but, um.
And we looked at that for the Doug White, and once it fails, then it, it's unusable if it does fail. And they can kind of, they can kind of do the trajectory of when it's going to fail, right?
Yeah, and I don't know what the law is, um, but I certainly know like if we have students on there and it's not safe.
The anecdotes I've heard is, when they get on Doug White, they're like, it's so squishy.
That's, that would be the safety part we were.
I'm just wondering if you're really gonna do this in July, if you have to put a down payment in, which would be the prior fiscal year, so if you wanna put some of it into.
Well, I'll talk about how we pay for it.
Yeah, he's got some creative.
That, that's a, that's a whole separate, this is what I'm identifying in the top section is what the needs are. And I'll um, talk about how to fund it, cause I, um, I will make a comment about the cost too, which is we, we are hearing the pressures from both towns and we also saw what happened when we brought the amenities building. So, you know, I know there was people who didn't support it, but this is something that I don't think we can risk not having support for it. Um, we will have students with, won't be able to play their games on a safe field, or they'll have to have their games away, so.
We, we hosted a few districts, right, this season?
Actually hosted Bedford this year, cause their turf wasn't finished in time, so we hosted a football game. Cause it can happen.
So they, they had an extra away game.
They had an extra way game.
I, I walked down, cause my son was at soccer practice to go look at other CC football and then I was like, where's CC? I texted Tracy, she's like, nope.
Okay, so, um. So that's what we estimate for the cost, this uh, existing conditions building assessment is something that we did at CPS. Um, I've talked to a consultant that's um, kind of an expert in this field and, um. Yeah, what they said was, as the building approaches fifteen years, it'd probably be a good time to do it. I know it's something that's come up with the town that we should have CCRSD capital plan. I hope this, um, my, my, my view is that we probably be throwing some money away by doing it that early, if we try to do it in twenty-six or twenty-seven, that if we wait until um, FY twenty-nine, we'll get more value from it, there'll be more things that need to be addressed and that we need to pay attention to in the near term. Now, if we did it now, we'd be looking at things that may be three, four, five years out, by the time we get there, it's a little bit of stale information. Um, it's a little bit more theoretical, so, um, I'm recommending that in FY twenty-nine. At least, there's some specific. Yeah, there's some specific smaller things, um. The, um, the, and I, I just wanna point out that the vehicles we have are replacing a two thousand eight model year and a two thousand five model year. So the special education ban, that's ju- just used by CCRSD. Um, and that maintenance vehicle, we rotate, we buy some from CPS, we buy uh, some from CCRSD, the last one we bought was from CC, uh, CPS. It's, um, the region's turn to, to pay for a maintenance vehicle, so those are the, the total costs we've identified over five years. Um, and what I've um, kind of listed here is I've just assumed that, um, the, uh, the lighting control updates will, will pan out of the operating budget. Um, I think we have the capacity to absorb that and it's not certain that we're gonna need to replace all of them over those times, we'll wait till they fail. Um, and then I, it, I, um, was looking at like, we're gonna have to fund the rest from capital, uh, our, our capital stabilization. And that would mean we'd have to contribute two hundred and six thousand, um. I, I, I'm assuming, I, I've assumed we use some excess and deficiency to fill gaps. The challenge is how do we come up with this two hundred and six thousand in capital funding in FY twenty-seven and seven hundred and sixty-four in FY uh, twenty-eight? And so what I'm proposing as a sample funding strategy, um, is that we repurpose our OPEB contributions. And this shows you what our capital stabilization fund is at the bottom, currently we have we have four hundred and twenty-five thousand in our capital stabilization fund, I'm not counting two hundred and twenty-five because that's set aside for sewer connection fees for the amenities building. Um, if, if we repurpose our OPEB, which we've gotten feedback from Carlisle that we're probably contributing more than they think we need to. Um, we use the two hundred and six thousand that we've identified in our plan will be left with three hundred and eighty-nine. We then can contribute three hundred and seventy-five the following year, um, and that will enable us to cover the cost of the turf field. That'll enable us to cover the cost of the turf field without having to ask Concord or Carlisle for another buddy, re- bu- another uh, dollar. We're uh, repurposing the OPEB. We're uh repurposing the O P E B fund. The feedback we've gotten from Carlisle is that it's a very challenging uh budget environment. I also think that um it helps us be a little bit more um self sustaining if we figure out. And regularly factor in some type of capital stabilization contributions, so. These one off projects aren't hitting the town in a clunky way, where it's a large number one year, nothing the next year, a large number two years later. But to try to have a more measured um funding model. So that's how I um recommend funding it, I know it's a lot of uh data and a lot to react to, there's no vote tonight. But it certainly welcome any feedback on it.
Question. Uh had we either repurposed or failed to put funding into O P E B in the past?
Last year for the first time, that was mostly because the added jurisdictions were um well, well over. We're uh we're sick, we were sixty percent funded as of the last valuation of the O P E B trust, but I think we were like the second largest regional district in the state. So there's like a generational equity question, how much do you wanna fund for future, so taxes don't have to pay for it versus.
Where would where would this put us do?
We're still, I mean, I think we still have healthy investment earnings, I mean, there's eleven million dollars in it, so um. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head what we've done from July through October, but I think we had some healthy earnings the last fiscal year. To to me, I I feel like we're in a position, not many. Not hardly any regional districts are in. And it's, you know, you you're we're balancing needs and uh that's a future need. What, when that's funded, what it does, it will mean we don't have to. We don't have to budget as much for retiree healthcare, we can use the trust um to fund it. I I I think, I think in terms of the short term needs we have here. It would probably help the towns more if we redirected it to capital stabilization, so they didn't have the the hit on her.
Well, do any of these projects qualify for M S B A funds?
None, uh none of these, there's an M S B A accelerated repair project, if we've been thinking about the the roof when we need to replace that, but our. Buildings aren't old enough, um if we have to. Wait until I think they're thirty years old.
Average age of our forty two buildings is seventeen years old, so.
If you take care of your buildings, you're not wanna gonna get, you're not gonna get those, um but if seventy years, you pro- whatever you remember that is, yeah. And I at the high school won't be eligible for uh you know twenty years. Um and um they won't cover a turf project.
Speaking of the turf, why do you think we need a study before we?
I I I I didn't, did I call a study?
Yes, you called the study, it's a design, I asked the same question, it's a design.
Where does it say study?
I don't know, I think you just said it studied.
Yeah, it's not a study.
It's a design.
We're not gonna study it.
I was like, why are we studying?
Okay, it was study someplace, right?
I think you said it, in here it says design.
Additional design costs, yeah, I I I I think um. We have studied on on the different options, we have the benefit of that same study that was already done for Doug White, we can look at that, we can certainly talk about it, but we don't need to pay for no study.
Just um just to mention, we meet with FinCom the twentieth, so. We'll have to, uh yeah, of this month, which is why you're gonna see capital plans for both districts and the meetings we have with you. It's a high level conversation, so I don't think you have to have all this resolved, they're gonna be curious to see what we've put proposed. I think they'll be very intrigued to hear we're trying to play pay for it ourselves, so we'll probably leave it at that.
But then the meeting of the three boards and it's not.
December eighth.
It's December eighth.
Yeah, I don't, it is not joint Carlisle. It's all capital.
All capital, yeah, yeah.
A couple smaller ones here, we might have to do this year and take it off this year, take it off and plan for next year, we'll we'll see, like the. Irrigation control and the um R T U controller, you know, I mean, the music room would be very warm if we didn't fix that, you know, May and June. So, we're.
Do they have local thermostats or only the controls?
Say that again?
Do they have local thermostats or only the controls?
Just the controls that teachers don't get, say, other than a degree or two at most.
And this controller is the one that communicates with the rooftop unit, so it's not, it's not telling it to heat the room. So it's po- so I listed them, cause I know we have them and we haven't made a plan to do it yet this year, but these might get pulled and brought forward earlier.
Alright, any other questions on capital plan? Okay, great. Alright, our last discussion item, it's kind of a joint discussion item with the superintendent and the school committee goal, so. Why don't we start with yours, Lori, and then we'll go to our goal and after that. Does anybody want like a two minute break? We're we're like twenty five minutes behind, sorry, I tried, could we just take a quick two minutes? Okay, can you mute us? Hit the other room for two minutes. And we're back, so Dr. Hunter, I will turn to you on your goals.
Okay, so this is the first of our new plan to look at my goals quarterly. Uh with some consult with the chairs for a strategy of how to do that, we deferred to the. Um tool that the committee used last year for your goals. And I actually really liked it, because it was a great way to. Scan down the list and say, where am I on each piece? And thanks to Chat G B T, I converted it from Word to a spreadsheet in about a half a minute and um here you are. Uh I'll just highlight a couple, I think, and and we probably wanna talk on color coding, cause I. At some point, some of them are gonna be done and I'm gonna wanna put a done on there, but the green means they're where we would want them to be right now. The yellow means not yet, and I can explain each of those, mostly it's just the timing of the year and where we are. But overall, I think things are going well, there's some academics there, you see with E L and A E P, Vision of the Graduate. Um we have had to delay Darnisa Amonte Jackson, she's been on maternity leave with twins, so she is. Due here in January, we thought that was ambitious, that she was trying to give us a workaround plan and we just deferred, so.
Is is there someone else that we can?
She is totally ready to go for January, so we just reworked the schedule. We're talking with the teacher, both unions about the teacher evaluation rubrics and updating those. Um I they're they're gonna be spring projects, winter, spring projects, but we're actively moving that, I just haven't done it yet.
And will those be M O As?
They'll be M O As, you never wanna do the rubric the year you're bargaining, so it's always an M O A that you would roll into the contract when you do bargain, so. And they only update the rubrics every so many years, so it's been probably six years since we did it last. Um the other one that's yellow is the the next two yellows are really budget related, so you'll. Be talking with me on those efforts to start um looking at. Interventions across the three elementaries, that's obviously CPS. And then I left that placeholder yellow with identifying the uh strategic plan initiatives as they, as we look at the budgets. The rest is all moving along quite nicely, um some of it's monitor and support, which I often will use to a point. Um we managed, as you heard, the panorama surveys are out with religion in them, we're really interested to see those come back and. Who opts in and how we can start to hopefully do some disaggregation there. And it is students, families, um both, so adults can put it in too, so if the kids are hesitant, maybe parents will do it, um but we'll we'll see. We've identified open circle lessons, the working on, and I'll try to stay high school, sorry, it's all a blend in here. Uh I have my first high school lunch department meeting tomorrow, so we're doing that culture work um at the high school and getting that moving. The Ellen, the Ellen Garrison piece was last night, grant opportunities, we are just rolling and. Doing a great job of seeing, Desi's putting out so many more. Grant options for district like ours, it used to all be based on need and we never qualified, and the competitive ones now we are. And um been really, you know, you can only write grants when you're succeeding some of the time at least, cause you start feeling like it's a waste, so. That's been exciting, we have a couple more in the works there. Obviously, we're in budget season and looking at. C P C, I'll just name it, I've been working with C P C on the amenities building and trying to see where, what they need and Bob and I've provided in- information and. Keeping that discussion alive, at least in that venue. Story of the school, I think we're done.
I think it's, so story of the school is just, I think it's done, Carrie is not joining us, um but we did receive. In its final version, and this is not for lack of us. Following up and trying to get it, so we were just waiting for it from the graphic designer, um so that will be going out.
Yep, and then the last piece I'll mention is just the work with the communication firm. I've also been working, I met I met with the bridge editor and really, we've talked on how to maximize our work with them in a different way, so. Encouraged even in the last week, Trace has been coming up with all great ideas that we've been trying to support him on, so. I think the combination of the two is probably the long term plan, I think. You know, we're, we've built the website that are the stories that we're generating, and I think that's the perfect balance, cause we can pick what we are gonna generate. And they pick what they're interested in, it kind of becomes a perfect compliment. And so I think probably just getting that word out about that website and getting some more traffic there. I have, if you've seen my newsletters, they're now, I feel more robust, because they're coming with some real. Plethora of content. So we're, I think the structure's there, now it's the, how do we actualize, and you can hear the kids are spotting themselves. The Globes picked up a couple articles off of the um communication firm picking things out, so. I think it's a decent place to be in November with more of a vision to continue.
Great, and I think what's been helpful this year is in your weekly updates, when you put the standards in and you give us an update, so.
Okay, good.
We'll see, you know, like typically what Lori does is she, at the end of the year, you'll get all of the evidence. Listed together with, oh wow, that was, that was exciting, with our goals. And it's actually a lot to absorb at one time, so I feel like seeing it weekly, it gives us, eh, we can see your evidence. You know, we see it for a narrative, but then Lori's good at like doing the um, she'll give you links to all the evidence, so that. You know, maybe even in your next update, if you have any links to anything, you wanna provide, just so we're not getting it all at the same time, I think that could be helpful.
Depends what time on Sunday.
Cause at the end, when we were doing it just at the end of the year, it was a lot of information to go through. When you really, you know, it's just, it was very time consuming, so this is helpful.
I do agree, there's new Sunday, the format on Sunday, it's just very. Footage just at a glance, so.
Great, yeah, thank you.
I I actually do have a question, if, just looking particularly at the last four bullets on um communication. You've done well in going, getting everything, almost everything, the green is as 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 uh should be expected, I guess. Do we have measures, or we'll be seeing measures that show how those bullets on communications relate to. Moving things toward a goal or, what measure do we have to see how we succeed?
I mean, Andrew looked at me and said, how many clicks do we have on that website that you've generated all this news on, I think there's gonna be multiple ways to measure. The goals themselves have different variance degrees of that, and I think some of it's looking at, you know, some of them are gonna refer to other data points and looking at. Where we saw growth and things like that, so usually that level of discussion would happen closer to the actual evaluation itself. Which would be next spring.
Which is not this spring, buddy, you're on the spring, right, right. And maybe that would be something you could shoot for, like in February, if there was anything that you could add on that, you know, just inform us on that.
So that we'll have something that we can look at to say, oh yeah, we're making progress.
Progress, yeah, yeah, like some evidence somewhere.
Okay, let me think on that and propose some ideas too.
I think you mentioned a lot of those.
Yeah, and it's just trying to figure out where we put it and how we see it.
An- another question for you. Where do you think you need support?
Interesting way to ask me that. You're doing it, I think, I really do. You know, the work that the team is doing is very well supported, we feel, you know, I think. Especially tonight was a great example, like we knew how much you were gonna wanna hear in data. That's holding us accountable for that, and we tried to give you a. Stack of data that was gonna try to answer most of those, but also be able to take your questions, I mean, I think that's you doing your job and. Asking all and probing and what's this and what's that, and um so I think that's one, is to keep doing that. Um in a way that feels collaborative uh would be the hope, and that's certainly where we are. Uh I think two is just the budgets, Carlisle is especially already putting out flags of really big concern. And I'm gonna say what you already know, and I think this is gonna be a group wide, you know, the the reductions they're asking for get multiplied at the high school budget. Which is where we usually get really challenged, because the exponential factor becomes very impactful versus a. A one percent isn't a one percent, so I think we have a lot of work to do there. So I think you're about to really become part of that hard discussion, yeah.
Alright, well, thank you, anything else on Lori's goals, okay. Onto our goals, and I am going to share. I did not use chat, because I was not good at it, so I just made an old school church.
It's so fun though, when it works.
I know, it wasn't working, it was taking too much time, it's like, I'll be right with you, I'm like, okay, they're not right with me, so I went old school. So one thing that we're working on, actually with the graphic designer that's doing our goals, and when you see story of the school. There, our goals are right at the bottom of the last page, so what I have asked for is. You can, we have some things hanging around the room now, just to keep us focused on, the strategic plan is here, we've got our bias reporting. Paper right there that's going to be a poster, just because I think it's important to keep us focused on what we're doing and why we're here, we have it up, so it's up. So I asked Lori, I said, I wanna poster in here, and I also want our goals to be posted up here, so we're always focused on them. Not just the three times a year that we're gonna actually look at them. Uh last year, we did a green and a red model, Brian reminded me of that, where green was on track, red was, need some attention. So I think as a committee, I did not fill in any, any colors next to my chart here. But I think as a committee, we should decide, do we want green, yellow, red, do we want green, red? How do we wanna track it, and then I do have a notes column, cause I think it's important. To just note, like, if we have something to work on in November, I wanna track it here, so we're, we'll go back to it. So I just wanna go through as a committee, just one by one, uh the first. Goal is a budget goal to ensure transparent, collaborative and fiscally responsible budgeting that aligns with district priorities and public support. So I just wanna go down this list of the objectives that are under here. And we have to first decide on the color coding, if anyone has thoughts on that, green, yellow, red or green, red?
I feel, yeah. I feel the green, red works well, because it's, it's either on track or off track, and I don't wanna debate, is it partially off track? Is it fully off, like?
So maybe the notes is an area that.
Can elaborate on that, but I do think it's just cleaner if it's on or off.
Okay, Andrew, you have any thoughts on that?
Uh I agree.
Green, red, Michael?
Simple would be better.
Okay, whatever.
I like stoplight charts, all three would be good, but.
Okay, oh, oh, so do you, but all three, alright. So it sounds like we're doing two, and then maybe in the notes, that section we do it, okay. So we will just, let's see if I can actually do this online.
Edit access and all.
Oh, yeah, Brian, that's great, thank you, do you have that? That'd be great. Can I figure it out? Alright, Brian. He's ready.
Yeah, you have the power.
Have the power, alright, host, I, and this is, again, I think with Lori, I think we have to do like when we're check, we're done, so maybe it's a green with a check mark in it or something. Brian, get creative, um host onboarding budget workshops for new committee members by September twenty twenty five. Um host onboarding budget workshops for new committee members by September twenty twenty five, or a full committee workshop by October twenty twenty five. I feel like that's done. Maybe green and a check?
So- something to make sure we don't have to track it from.
Yeah.
Next to.
Okay. Um collaborate with Concord Carolina Finance Committees to reach a mutually agreed upon FY twenty seven budget guideline by October of twenty twenty five. Andrew, we'll look to you on that one, cause you just went to FinCom, I mean, we haven't really collaborated with them yet.
Well, their final guideline is not till November, so I would rewrite this, I would write this differently.
So are we comfortable with changing the date to November, cause this is what we wrote in August?
I'd say it's off track, because um we're a at least a percentage point apart.
It's off track, okay. So maybe.
I guess what I struggle with a little bit is we're so early in the game, our collaboration, I think is on track for where we are, I.
Okay.
I know what you mean, um like we obviously have the work.
Ahead of us.
To do, but we've. I think for where we are in the year, we've been. On track for the collaboration.
Okay, that's fair.
So can we just say like, I'm just gonna type some notes in here, on track, but working towards November.
Sure.
Okay, next one, present clear community accessible budgets for CPS and CCRSD at the twenty twenty six town meetings.
I think again, where we are in November, we are on track for that.
Yeah. Cause that wouldn't be in November. And if anybody has any notes or comments, feel free to just. Alright, goal two. I won't read these to everyone, cause I think you can all read. We'll start with the first objective. Alright, this is the community engagement goal. So amplify and promote district-wide communications, district bulletin, school newsletters, local news outlets. With measurable engagement by mid-year check-in, January of twenty twenty six.
So we don't have to track that.
So it's by January twenty twenty six, but do we feel as though we are promoting the district-wide bulletin, that's why I read that.
What do we have to measure that, how do we measure that?
I think that's where we're stuck here, I don't think that we actually put that into our goals, it's how we're gonna measure that, is it clicks, is it? Um social media trends, like your social media, we don't have social media, and you can see the viewer.
Yeah, that one's awesome.
I I know, it's, this is a little trickier.
Well, I think we produced a lot of the content, and we have the relationships, and we have the infrastructure, and now it's maybe tracking clicks and maybe doing a sur- like a poll survey. I don't know.
Well, and I do think that that added um. The added part on our website, I think that's been super helpful um for district-wide communication, so we can send people there, but I think we have to be. Uh we did this before and we did QR codes in the buildings. I don't know if it really got us anything, like every time we had something, we would have a QR code, so people would go right to our website, and they could see it, but we can't really track it. Um we did it with a subscriber list, I think it was three year, two or three years ago, we're trying to build our subscriber list, and so we're pushing people to um. QR code, so we could see it, but. We didn't have huge results, cause some people just don't wanna subscribe to anything else.
So we are definitely amplifying our communication, we're promoting it, and then we just need a way, a better way to track it.
Tracking how successful we are.
The 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 way I read that, it's it's we have to have a way to measure by January.
Hmm.
Hmm, okay, yeah, okay, alright, so on track, and let's talk about it at our next meeting, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Sure.
For like how we're tracking it.
So I'm I'm certain, I'm not certain we can say we're on track, but we don't have a measure.
Yeah, that's why I'm, you know, which which is why the dude.
The orange would be great.
That's why the yellow, why the yellow, orange, we don't know. Brian, I'll let you decide what goes in there, I see question marks.
Yeah. I think the way again I look at it is if our goal is to have measurable engagement by January, and we are thinking about it and working on it, that's. We're still on track, if we don't have measurable engagement by the time we look at this in February, then.
That's right, okay.
We can't, I don't think we can say that we're on track, if we don't have a measure, I think we need to have a measure before we can say we're on track.
What is the purpose of making it red, is just to apply more focus to it basically, which is what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so make it red.
So.
I'm just gonna make the whole box red like Lori's, so you can see it, and yeah, you can do it off the board.
It's a lot of pressure.
It's a lot of pressure in life, I know, I'm living along, Brian.
I don't know what this is a simple option for right now. And the limitations.
Alright. Alright, alright, moving on to the next one. Uh deep relationships with the select board and finance committees to better align goals and ensure community-wide transparency and fiscal coordination. Um I do believe we're on track with this, I have had a lot of conversations with Clark Cowles since the summer, I think FinCom, I think we've had some. One-off conversations with members of FinCom, we did have the meeting um in your office with FinCom leadership, we also had a meeting at Lois's house. Uh so I do feel like we are in better shape with our relationships there.
And just to add from the Carlisle perspective, I do agree that we're on track, I mean, just the fact that they had me twice present on.
Carlisle perspective, yeah. Yes, mm-hmm.
The happenings in both districts um at the select board meeting, um.
I don't think that's happened before.
No.
So, I think that's helpful.
No, it does.
Yeah.
May- maybe one action would be to ask the finance committee and Mark and Mark from the select board if they're happy with our engagement.
Okay, yep. Happy to do that. And will you do that in Carlisle?
Uh in Carlisle, excuse me.
Alright, pilot new two-way communication channels, podcasts, town hall style listening sessions to engage more diverse voices by early twenty twenty six, we have not done anything with podcasts. So I would say off track.
I also don't know that we've done town hall style.
No.
Listen, we were starting to look at it in Carlisle and then decided we needed to. Delete for a little bit.
Yeah, and I think that um, I'll just say as a. We haven't given recent events, we're not really uh opening things up publicly right now. I'll just say that.
Might be more of a reason to open things up.
Well, I think from a safety perspective, I think that that's what we were thinking about.
Understood, but might be more of a reason to open up a two-way dialogue publicly.
Are we get back on track on this?
Well, so did the, like, when we had coffee with, like, the one-off coffees, would it be like part of that, or would, was that not new?
The one-off coffees, yeah. Oh, that's a bit part of that.
Because I know several of us have met with several people one-on-one in conversations about thing, I mean, I. We have not done a podcast, I can, ob- obviously, we did not do that, but we have done, when someone has said, meet me for this, we have done.
We have had a lot of meetings, I actually agree with that.
I mean, the the larger format, yeah, we've been not doing it, and Brian and I are talking about it in Carlisle, we have some venue challenges among other things.
Yeah.
Uh but, yeah, I think, I mean, we've been open to it when asked to do it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, I agree with that, that's a good point.
I'm happy to keep responding to uh written comment.
Mm-hmm.
That's a form of two-way.
Yep.
I just gotta be careful of that open meeting.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, are we thinking about podcasts this year? As a committee, we thinking about doing a podcast?
I am not. I would say if there's the opportunity to join a podcast, like.
Yeah, you'd be on.
Join a podcast.
Brian and Clay, who puts together a podcast for Carlisle, we could participate.
With with.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I don't see us having our own radio station.
Our own podcast, the radio station, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, going on it, but we can't.
Go in IQH, yeah.
Yeah, if you went there, you'd have tech support, cause Ned could set you up to just do it.
Right. So maybe, maybe it's outreach with other committees, so, I mean, the town of Concord is, I think Carlisle's doing more than Concord is doing, but Megan Zabudo is doing podcasts.
Yeah, we have that.
So if we had an opportunity to maybe partner with the select board and the FinCom to do something.
I've been saying this, but I'm happy to explore. What to do.
Oh yes, your PEG access. Right? Alright, funding for the. Job.
What was that actually?
Um, he's gonna explore.
Do we need a subcommittee, do we need like a subcommittee on this, or is that?
Subcommittee would not be a bad idea.
Yes.
We do have the communications.
We are the communications.
We're, yeah, I agree. Good story of the school wrapping up.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, yeah.
Something new, new church.
Yeah, okay. Alright, goal number three, policy oversight innovation goal.
Scroll down.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yep. So I think what we do need to do is, we don't have a policy subcommittee, but we're gonna do it, because we did a full-scale policy review last year, we're gonna do it at meetings. Um so what I would suggest is, starting in January, to put, to do the M I S C updates, that were from our policies and take a look at those first. Um.
My plan was to get you the state-required policies done first, which is why you've done two now.
Yes. Yep.
And then I think that makes sense, to roll over to that.
Mm, that makes sense, so, so we are, we are doing that in our policy work, so, but I think that would be the plan for moving forward, but that would be like a January plan. So I do think we're on track, cause we are looking at some of our policies.
Well, you did the required ones, yeah.
We did one tonight, we did the required ones, we do two requireds.
Not everybody can say that, right, mate?
Right.
Give yourself a, a yellow or a a green, green.
Alright. Okay.
Green.
Um, green, okay, so the cell phone policy, all, now this is all by quarter two twenty twenty six. And I think I had left this meeting earlier, we were talking about those, I'm not sure what you guys meant by this, I think I left that early.
Did we mean fiscal quarter? Like, did we mean that by December?
Well, see, summer like January, summer, spring, summer quarter two, summer quarter one.
Or do we mean by?
I may have said that, and and in my mind, it's it's April through June, second.
So calendar quarter, I might, can we just change that to say June twenty twenty six?
Yeah, can you, yeah.
Is everybody okay with that, just so it, cause with fiscal quarter versus calendar quarter?
Does everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Yep, please change it, that's great.
Because that makes a big difference.
Okay, so in this one, and specifically the example with cell phone policy at the high school, and I think we are looking to see what the state is doing on that, and we will have to talk about that as a committee.
I'd say that's kind of off track, if we haven't done anything yet.
Mm-hmm, we did.
Does that say the AI, didn't we talk about the AI policy?
We did.
Mm-hmm, we did.
You did.
So maybe it's on track.
Harshly on track.
Yeah.
Partially, maybe you can yell us, right, I don't know.
I think it needs attention.
I think the cell phone is a number, is probably the top three pieces of feedback I'd get, so we we got them.
Needs attention, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We were at the amenities last Tuesday, it was um.
The um, that the middle school is sponsoring, Adrian, Adrian Principi, yes.
But. And and there were a lot of parents there, or I had to leave early, and so they were a little bummed.
And we did get correspondence about it also.
Could mention that, yeah, yeah, cell phone policy there.
Yes.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, okay, off track.
But just as a note, I don't know that we need to wait, I don't know that we wanna wait for the state.
Yeah.
So.
Uh I I think we take the lead.
Yeah.
And I do think that we'll need your help with getting some feedback from the staff and the students, we talked about that last year, getting student and staff feedback, that might be something great to talk with our reps about too.
Maybe.
Or student senate, or some channel like that.
Yeah, uh, easy.
What what are these three, so this is November, what's the middle?
November, February, and I look back at our calendar, November, February and June, that's when we have them charted out on that schedule.
Hmm.
That I attached. Sorry.
So what's our immediate action to get this back on track? I'd say we don't, we don't need to see what this.
So again, I think we have to do cell phones in January.
What does that mean, do cell phones in January?
Uh I I think we need to start talking about cell phone policy too.
I think we, at our, I think at our next meeting, we should outline what a process looks like.
Okay.
Or we have time to do that, so that we start in January.
We have one meeting in December, it's gonna be a long meeting.
So I I think, I think we should, um.
Alright, that's okay, no, we'll put it on the, we can do process.
And and I think we should invite community correspondence on that subject.
Well, I think we should get a process.
Right.
I think we should get a process in December, and then our first meeting in June, we could have people come.
Yeah.
No, but e- even if people come, I don't think we'll have time for everyone to speak, so just send in correspondence.
Oh, right. Right, and we'll have a hearing maybe too.
Yeah. Okay, um, are we good with that, we're off track? Launch transparent, publicly accessible policy update tracker on the district website by the end of twenty twenty five. Who would like to comment on that? Anyone?
I would say we are off track, cause I don't think we've had any headspace.
I'm not really sure um the definition of this objective, does anyone wanna expand on that? Or you're gonna make me go back and watch it? Shall we all go back and watch the meeting?
We should.
Okay, I'm gonna say off track on that. And everybody's homework is go back and watch the discussion of the September joint meeting, I think it was September tenth.
And the first person to do it can maybe text the group on what.
No, we cannot, we cannot.
That's us.
We cannot.
Oh, right, sorry.
No, you cannot text, but you can import, you can send me an email and I will push it out to first person watching, yes, the timestamp, yes, yes.
Email.
With the timestamps, at least.
Just that's all I want.
Timestamp.
So whoever watches it first is gonna send me an email and I will push it out to the committee.
Which is gonna be you, Tracy.
It's not gonna be me, I'm gonna put my money on that. Michael, love you or me.
I'll try, I'll try.
Okay, okay.
Aaron can get you the timestamp.
Oh, yeah, that would be even better.
Well, we could ask Aaron to do that.
That's even better.
September tenth meeting, during the goal discussion, okay, Aaron's gonna push it out.
Actually, might, it might be helpful just to watch that discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think I already watched it once, but this is not ringing a bell with me. Okay, um onto four superintendent evaluation and student outcome goals. So that first objective, evaluate and approve specific measurable, actionable, results-oriented and time-track goals for this academic year in September twenty twenty five.
That's done.
Okay? Right? Conduct quarterly reviews of approved superintendent goals with aligned evidence and documented feedback at regular intervals, minimum three times a year, so we're. We're doing that, on track.
I'd say we're on track there.
And last one, monitor student achievement and equity-related.
Sorry, sorry, need to go back through this one, it's documented feedback, we haven't documented any feedback.
Yeah.
We 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 heard Lori present.
Yep, she's, and she's given us evidence, we haven't given her any feedback, is your point.
What is feedback, the discussion we've had, or?
It says documented feedback is a conversation sufficient?
I think we defined that yet.
We defined that.
Yeah, cause we were, the question we had was, what are we gonna use to measure? It was a conversation we just had.
How about if, how about if everyone sends their feedback to me um about how we can document and find measurable goals, like if you send me feedback.
Why don't I work on the measurable part before February, cause it'll help this conversation, I think.
And I'll put it together, and you work on that, okay? Or if you have any feedback on anything you've seen in our goals, send it in writing, and then we'll compile it and we'll review it, yeah.
That too, yeah.
Um and that could be, you know, her Sunday weekly updates to us, it could be the tracker that we saw tonight, and just send it to me.
But I do think documented feedback would be oral and written.
Oral and written, yeah, so.
Yeah. The conversation tonight is also a part of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, last, monitor student achievement and equity-related data as it becomes available, including subgroup performance, climate surveys and attendance trends. So I think that we are on track with that, we just had an MCAS presentation tonight, and we will be seeing um. Climate surveys.
I would have to disagree, cause the information that was in the presentation was not substantial. We weren't able to identify how many people we were talking about, we were dealing with percentages without any reference number, so I would have to say that I wouldn't find that acceptable.
Fair.
The numbers we didn't give you, though, are because of the small end sizes.
I understand, but.
So we're happy to give them to you offline at the public meeting, it's just that, that's that's the concern is the student.
It's it's a, you know, on multiple different slides, so if we're having that small number of groups, we should find a different way to show that information, because. The percentages are not referenced to anything, so it's.
I hear your point, I think we should, we gotta figure out how to manage the small group size and get you what you need.
Right, so I think that we gave the direction of the, it's it is the Desi-reported information, cause that's what's publicly available.
Right, I went to Desi, and I saw that there was no information on there, and we have the information, but we shouldn't be doing a presentation with information that doesn't have any reference point. You know, it doesn't mean anything, it just.
So we spent a lot of time on the chairs on this, trying to protect student information versus. So we spent a lot of time on the chairs on this, trying to protect students' information versus the. Part, you're 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 right.
Right.
And we're trying to not disclose. That of the eight kids that are in a certain group in the tenth grade, half are doing this and half are doing that, we just, that's where we got this uncomfortable.
When you look at like this slide about how how many students go out of four or five. You know, in their AP uh exams, you know, black students, it's at a hundred percent, they're just one kid, you know, so.
It's very little, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, like, it it's really hard to digest the data, and I wonder if we could find a different way.
Yeah. I think that's the challenge, that that I think is worth trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Even like, you know, one tick mark represents ten people, or you know, like, just some other way to reference the data, so that we could get a better idea of what we're talking about. As far as numbers.
Right, and I think that that part of the challenge, and I'm gonna make up numbers here, because I'm gonna make it up, say it's two. You don't want somebody to say, well, is it Susie Smith, or is it, you know, Johnny Smith, like, who do we think it is that's taking that class, that's what we were.
That's problematic, that the groups are so small.
That's, that, you know, that's a problem also, if it's two out of fifteen, or two out of eighty. There are questions that, there are two different questions that need to be answered. And and with respect to what to be able to make that determination. There, we should look at a way to do that, so when we look at those tables, when we look at those bar graphs. That we can tell that, ah.
Mm-hmm, or even like, you know, shaded without numbers, this is how big the population is, and this is the percentage. You know, like, some type of reference, even if it isn't numeric based, to give people an idea of like, what the subgroup is representing. Within the larger group of.
I do think it's gonna be easier with K through eight, right, cause it appears.
Hmm, it's not consistent, K eight, there's some spots it hits the threshold, and others it doesn't.
And I think, you know, you district-wide you could, but if if you're looking at individual schools, you may not. Because of the N size at that grade level. In that school, cause you're looking at grades three, four, five, six, seven, you know, so.
Yeah, it, I look, yeah, even a few of them don't hit it.
It just really depends on the grade level.
And even the tenth grade in particular is a very small class. So whereas like the twelfth grade might have three hundred and twenty kids, the tenth grade has like two hundred and sixty kids. There was a dip in two thousand eight first rate, so I think, you know, you might be experiencing some of that too.
Well, so it's not for lack of trying, and maybe there's, maybe you can give a Shelley or lawyer.
That should come through me, I think.
Yeah.
But I also think, I mean, we talked a lot about it, and we're still here talking about it, so I.
We did talk a lot about it. Yeah.
Don't know that we're gonna solve it offline with the whole committee either.
Right. Yeah.
Maybe we could put it on a future agenda, and we can revisit it later.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay.
So so can I ask another question? Th- this is all data on open architecture.
Y- yes, most of it, but it's a mix of other sources too, Des, Shelly, Desi, Open Architect. Where you pulled the data from?
Yeah. Well, in the AP, it's all from the high school.
Some of it's our own, really, really internal data that we're trying to give you access to, yeah.
Yeah, it's internal data.
Like I said, I think it would also be somewhat confusing from that internal. Staff presentation that was shared around enrollments. Um because we are not, you're, you might be confused then. With the numbers, because they don't necessarily match Desi's way of. Identifying demographics, racial data. So as we've shared, the high school wants to identify the students, how they id- self-identify. And if they are mixed race, we do have a good number, um so it can skew those numbers a little bit. Um that's one thing, but we can clean that up, and there was a slide, at least in the. Um just to show the enrollment trends for a particular subgroup, so yes, like. Our enrollment is down about a hundred students, I think, from last year.
Yeah.
And so, um we're at about eleven forty-nine or eleven forty-seven, last year it was over twelve hundred. Um so when you think about student subgroups, those, when that, those percentages have dipped a little bit too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sorry, going back to the question, uh Open Architect, who has access to it?
It's internal, all of us at the district and school level as well. Yep, and teachers also have a dash, have their platform dashboard through Open Architects as well. It's just they're only seeing their students.
Good. But that's not something that we have access to, right?
Right, that that's.
So it would be good to have a data conversation where we're not trying to convey the data itself, but the process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Sounds like that would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
So that when we do bring the data, we talk through how to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, anything else on this?
I I do think we're still gonna wanna know. You know, let me look at a, a bar graph and see a hundred, look at bar graph and see uh sixty-seven. What that number means with respect to the student population being certain. Uh so understanding how it's, how we got there. Is important and necessary, but understanding what that bar means with respect to our distinct population. Is just going to inform us whether we're doing well or not, and that's, that's. We understand how, that's what's gonna tell us whether, how much we need to push to do better. Cause we always wanna do better, but how much we need to push, that, and we don't know that, it's clearly now, I don't think.
The one thing we can say is that we see the trends moving in the right direction.
Right.
You know, we do see that happening, so I just wanna have a full understanding.
Alright, that's helpful. Alright, anything else on our goals and our new tracking document that we're gonna use? Yeah? Good, we all have homework to do, we know what it is. Alright, and with that, um would anyone like to get us into executive session?
I know that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose four, to discuss the appointment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto within Concord Carlisle open session.
And we need to roll call. We all have to think at nine o'clock, alphabetical order.
Um so what are we saying?
For check I.
For both though, or?
Uh yes, for both.
For check I for both.
All of her I for. Region, region, okay. So my my I for both.
Waters and I for region?
Williams I for both.
Alright.
No, no.